I'm going to call the meeting of the Vacaville City Council, May 11th, 2021. To order, can we have roll call, please?
Council Agency Authority Member Stockton?
Here.
Silva?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wiley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vice Chair Sullivan?
Here.
Mayor Chair Rollit?
Present.
You can please stand with me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Manager, do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, we don't.
Can I get a move of approval?
Sullivan on motion.
Thank you.
Wiley second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts? Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Mayor Rollit?
Yes. Item four, approval of minutes. May I have a motion?
Sullivan on motion.
Thank you.
Silva second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Mayor Rollit?
We'll move to item five A. Under Presentations, we have National Public Works Week Proclamation, 2021. Groom, are you going to take this one?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members and community members. I have a brief presentation. Crystal, if you could run that. While the PowerPoint is starting, I want to thank the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members for recognizing May 22nd through the 26th, May 16th through the 22nd as National Public Works Week. National Public Works Week is a celebration of the thanks of thousands of men and women who provide and maintain infrastructure and services collectively known as public work. The National Public Works Week was instituted as a public education campaign by the American Public Works Association, also known as APWA in 1960. The APWA is an organization dedicated to promoting professional excellence and public understanding through education, advocacy, and the exchange of knowledge. Stronger Together is the theme for the 2021 National Public Works Week this year. This year's poster and slogan challenges public works departments and the citizens we serve to think about the role public works plays in creating a great place to live, work, do business, and play. By working together, our citizens and public works professionals can have a significant impact and accomplish goals once they're unattainable. Next slide, please. So the Vacaville Public Works Department is tasked with this mission, which is to provide high-quality services to the public, the development community, and to other city departments in a responsible, efficient, and cost-effective manner. Crystal, next slide, please. And as you may have seen in our slogan, this mission is embodied by the slogan, "Service is our Business." Our department is organized, this slide may be a little too faint to see, but in general, the Public Works Department is the second-largest department in the city with 113 full-time and more than 30 part-time employees. And we are organized into three main functional areas. The Engineering Services Division, which is the green in the box you see over there, it's led by Assistant Director of Public Works Tim Burke with a staff of 24 full-time and three part-time positions. The Maintenance Services Division, which is on the left in blue, is led by Deputy Director Brandon McLean with a staff of 84 full-time and 28 part-time staff members. The Administration Functional Area includes the Director, which is myself, and a handful of administrative staff. Next slide. The Administration Functional Area, we are responsible for monitoring and administering the daily activities necessary to maintain an effective, efficient, and responsive operation, which includes oversight of the department in general, financial management, both in the CIP and operating budgets, community engagement and customer service, as well as liaison with staffing and personnel issues. Next slide. The Maintenance Division operates out of our corporation yard and typically handles more than 8,000 customer requests and processes more than 10,000 work orders. As you can see on this slide, the Maintenance Division has six core operational areas. The Fleet and Facilities, which is responsible for more than 540,000 buildings and 560 vehicle fleet. The Parks, we have more than 460 acres of parks and 2,200 acres of open space. Streets and Utilities are responsible for more than 270 miles of streets and 500 miles of water and sewer collection systems. Transit is responsible for managing the city coach system. ADA and Solid Waste are responsible for the ecology contract. And the central store is the repository and distribution center for goods and materials citywide. Next slide. The Engineering Services Division, it's generally responsible for the design, review, and approval, inspection, and management of city infrastructure and development projects. As you can see on this slide, we have four core business areas in Engineering Services. CIP Design is responsible for managing more than $30 million worth of CIP capital improvement program projects. Traffic Division is responsible for design and review of all street signs, striping, and legends, and also the signalized intersections, timing, and things like that. Development Engineering reviews all subdivision plans and also approving final maps and associated improvement plans. And the Construction Management Inspection Division section is the one that's responsible for overseeing projects in the construction stage. Next slide. Now, here are some notable accomplishments in the past year. I'm not going to read all of them, but you can see that they range from responding to more than 8,000 telephone calls to issuing more than 116 courtment permits, replacing or rehabilitating more than 78 streetlights, especially in the downtown area, and applying for grant applications, preparing and responding to the COVID-19 emergency pandemic, and implementing asset management systems. We thought, instead of listing all the accomplishments and the things that our men and women in public works did, we thought we would share with you a short video that highlights some of the works we've been doing. If you go to the next slide, please, Crystal. So this video, if it works, is a short video showing our men and women at work.
Next slide, please. So once again, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members and community members for supporting public works. Your Public Works Department is committed to continued service and excellence in what we do, and I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you very much. Wonderful presentation. I do see one hand up. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, great presentation, Mr. Woke. I wanted to not only commend you and your staff for the great work that they do maintaining our roads, our parks, and our utilities and everything else, but also, you know, your folks are kind of the unsung heroes too of the LNU fire as well, the tremendous effort that they put forward, helping our community and helping our other first responders out there fight that fire. I know when there is floods and different things in the community, your guys and gals come out and respond and really provide quality service to our community. And I just wanted to make sure that you know how much we appreciate the fine work that you and the folks that work for you are doing. So thank you so much. We really appreciate you, and you provide, you know, excellent service and help build the quality of life that we enjoy here in Vacaville. So thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Sullivan?
I just kind of want to quickly echo the same point. Zoom doesn't do this justice sometimes. You know, it's nice to see people face-to-face and really kind of thank them for their service, but I couldn't agree more with Councilmember Stockton. I think the Public Works team, just absolutely fantastic. Watching the pictures, it's so crazy, like the variety of work that you guys do, from standing up a light pole to creating a manhole to, you know, stabilizing a hillside to load cattle onto, you know, a hillside for fire protection. Your team just does so much to keep Vacaville running. And honestly, we don't notice them, and that's a good thing, right? Like, they do it quietly. There's very little issues. There's never problems. They're sort of like these public works ninjas that just keep town running and keep everything spick and span and doing a great job. So I just, I really appreciative of the work your team does and just how diverse and just how clean and well-run our city is. So huge kudos to your team. Huge kudos to you. Thank you for what you're doing. Appreciate all the presentation tonight. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Silva?
Hey, thank you. Yeah, so I love, you know, anytime I see them out, you know, doing their work, whatever work it is, just trying to stop by and chat with them. I'm always appreciative of the diverse conversations that come out of that. So I think, you know, it's just, and I really appreciate the tour that you guys gave to me maybe a couple months ago now. But, you know, it's, just echoing with my fellow council members have shared, there's a lot of work that, you know, these men and women do that we don't quite recognize or and it may be sometimes taken for granted. And so I really appreciate that and look forward to, you know, doing what we can to keep supporting you and support our quality of life. So thank you.
Thank you, council member. Yeah, and I was just going to echo what everyone said. Love our public works. Unsun heroes, absolutely. Working day, night, you know, ninja, I believe, was thrown out there. I agree with Vice Mayor Sullivan. Just absolutely amazing, and your presentation was great, but I loved the video. I appreciate the video. And I do have a proclamation for you tonight. This is the National Public Works Week Proclamation. Whereas National Public Works Week is a celebration of the men and women across the United States who provide and maintain the public infrastructure, services collectively known as public works. This theme of this year, 61st Annual National Public Works Week, is Stronger Together. And now therefore being resolved, I, Ron Rollit, Mayor for the City of Vacaville, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week in the City of Vacaville, and commend the city public work staff for the excellent service that they provide every day to ensure the health, safety, and comfort for quality of life of the residents of Vacaville. Thank you very much. Thanks so much, Mayor. All right, so we will jump to another presentation, five B. I believe this is a presentation for the seniors' Center Honors Older Americans Month Proclamation. Reggie Hubbard, are you available?
I am, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, council, Vice Mayor, council. Yes, it is Older Americans Month, and we're here to celebrate that. And with me, I have our Recreation Supervisor, Julia Madison, who works at the McBride Senior Center, who will speak briefly on this. I'll kick it over to Julia.
Thank you, Acting Director Hubbard, and thank you, Mayor Rollit, for having me here this evening. I also wanted to thank the Vice Mayor, City Council, and the Vacaville community. As Director Hubbard said, my name is Julia Madison, and I'm the Recreation Supervisor with the Parks and Recreation Department. Each year, May is recognized nationally as Older Americans Month, and usually, we would spend this month highlighting our older adult population, their wisdom and their contribution to our community. I want to reiterate this year that this recognition carries more weight than ever as we strive to protect our older adult population and as we look forward to being able to resume our more traditional programming with them in person. On behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department and my team of staff at the McBride Senior Center, I really want to thank the volunteers, local restaurants, and community members who have been working so hard to keep the senior hot meal deliveries and senior helpline active. I also want to especially thank council for continuing to provide the necessary support to serve our older adult population through this last year. With that, I'm going to hand things back over to the mayor.
Thank you very much, and I do have a proclamation for you. Whereas the McBride Senior Center was founded in 1967 and serves the community of members of 55 years or older, Vacaville is home to more than 20,000 citizens over the age of 60, and it is a growing population that is with evolving needs. And whereas the older adults in Vacaville deserve recognition for their contributions they have made and will continue to make the culture, the economy, and the character of our community and our nation. And now therefore being resolved, I, Ron Rollit, Mayor, on behalf of the city council, do proclaim May 2021 as Older Americans Month and urge everyone to take a moment to honor older adults and professionals, family members, and citizens who care for them. And I do have Councilmember Wiley's hand up. Councilmember Wiley?
Yes, I just want to say thank you very much for your work with the seniors in Vacaville because there's so many different needs, and particularly this past year with the pandemic. And I just appreciate working and finding out what the needs are for people, whether it's food, or recreation, or just talking to people. As an older American, I've received even a few phone calls, you know, throughout the pandemic, just checking on people. And some of my other friends have talked about that they got their phone calls. So I really appreciate reaching out to people and meeting them where they are and just the variety of services that you do for adults, older adults throughout Vacaville. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wiley. I appreciate those comments. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, I'd like to echo Councilmember Wiley's comments regarding how appreciative we are of staff for the efforts that they've made to really reach out to our older Americans in Vacaville during this pandemic. But I'd also like to thank our seniors for the tremendous contributions that they continually make to our city. They are some of the most vocal and passionate people that we have in our community, and they're active in everything from city government to a lot of the nonprofit organizations and different things that are happening throughout the city. And our city would not be as strong and as great and vibrant if it wasn't for those contributions and the time and the effort and the wisdom that they pour into our community. So thank you, staff, and thank you, seniors, for everything that you're doing to make sure that Vacaville, that the legacy of Vacaville lives on and is a great community for not only their generation, but the future ones as well.
Thank you, council member. I appreciate your comments. Okay, we'll move on to item six, the Consent Calendar. Anybody from the city council that wants to pull an item off the consent calendar?
Yes.
Oh, Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Yeah, I want to pull, give me one sec, sorry, let me make sure I have the number right. I would like to pull six A, please.
Okay. I will open it up to the public. If anybody wants to pull something off the consent calendar, I'll take the call now.
Norma Cervantes, I'll open your mic.
Sir, are you there? Oh. You have to clear your mute button. Okay, let's see if we can jump to the next caller, and we'll come back to that caller. Oh, they just cleared too. Okay. Alicia Minion?
Hi, I'd like to pull item six, Be Like Boy. It's regarding the Lot Line Adjustment Agreement.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next caller?
Ramon Rodriguez, I'll open your mic.
Is this a public comment or a Friday starting agenda?
No, this is for consent calendar. It's coming up, though.
Okay, I'll wait for public comments then.
Okay, I thank you. Seeing no other hands up, I will close public comment. I'll entertain motion for items six C, six D. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Silva, motion approved.
Thank you.
Stockton, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Rollit?
Hi. We'll go back to item six A, and I believe Vice Mayor Sullivan pulled that, so I'll call on Vice Mayor Sullivan.
Yeah, my question, and I talked a little bit with the city manager about this in our meeting this week, but my question really is, in the landscape and lighting districts, there's a massive variance between the amount that's charged district per district per district. And a big part of that is that, you know, you had some districts that were established, you know, 30, 40, even 50 years ago, and so, you know, the rate has kind of escalated and kind of it paid for what it paid for. And I don't remember the term that was used, but the term was like stubs and grubs. So it pays for basically the bare minimum. Oftentimes, it runs out of loss, and really, it just pretty much says enough to maybe have a, you know, Public Works make a quick pass or have a contractor make a quick pass and, you know, fix the irrigation once or twice a year. One of my problems, especially on the south side of town, especially in areas that sort of border my district and Councilmember Roberts' district and some of the other areas, is our main thoroughfares look like heck. If you look at Peabody, you look at Alamo, you look at certain other parts in the area, you've got fences falling down, you've got vandalism, you've got dead trees, you've got dead growth. You know, it's mostly dirt and some shrubs. You know, these are the gateways to the south side of town or the gateway to Travis Air Force Base, and when you're driving through these areas, the first impression you get is not a fantastic impression. And so I've been talking to the city manager about how do we really revamp or revitalize these main arteries, these main thoroughfares? And these aren't little side streets. These are main roads in Vacaville. And you don't really see this problem throughout most of town because of the way the design was done. But I really would like to, and I'm not sure, I'm not really making a motion or asking to change things. I more want to bring this to council's attention. I really would like a way to figure out how to do some heavy-duty maintenance on what I'm calling like priority areas. And so there's this concept of broken window theory where you fix the broken windows in a neighborhood, and all of a sudden, people start mowing their lawns and fixing stuff, and before you know it, the neighborhood's sort of fixed. We have a broken window quote-unquote problem in a couple of these major neighborhoods. On the main thoroughfares, the streets are just falling apart, and the landscape and lighting is never going to be enough to cover it. So I would like the city manager and staff to think of some creative ideas to bring back, whether that's through MHRM. I mean, I guess we could talk about the assessments here. I mean, I don't know how you would raise or double someone's assessment, you know, 30 years after they bought their house, but to some degree, we need some love in these areas. So I mostly wanted to bring this to council's attention and then sort of challenge the staff to come up with some creative answers to solve those problems. City manager, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but it is a big deal, and I think it actually really does impact the quality of life and people's impressions of certain parts of town.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So yeah, as we discussed, there's a couple of opportunities here, and I'm working directly with our public work staff on the whole issue of the gaps in our LLDs. And we will be bringing that back to council at a future meeting for future discussion. And I do believe that there's some opportunities to explore other enhancement possibilities with some possible, you know, funding options. So I think, you know, we'll definitely take a look at it. It is something that does contribute to the quality of life and the attractiveness of the community. So we will go ahead and take a look at that from both a financing mechanism and an ongoing aesthetic standpoint and bring that back to council at a future meeting.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Okay, I'm going to open up public comment for six A only. I don't see any hands. I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the city council to entertain motion.
I'll make a motion, Sullivan.
Mr. Silva, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rollit?
Hi. Okay, we will move to item six B, and I will ask the council if they have anything, but I don't see anybody's hand up. So I will go to Alicia Minion, who asked to pull it.
Hi, you know, I have more of a process question. So this particular lot line adjustment, you know, it ended up as a consent item, and I just, it wasn't clear why it is that council has to approve this particular lot line adjustment. And I'm asking this because I've seen other instances, like, for example, Lagoon Valley, apparently there was lot line adjustments, and that one, the director, I don't know if it's Director of Public Works, they had the discretion to make the lot line adjustment without it going to any council or commission. And so I was just... any council or commission. And so I was just wanting to get some clarity on process. Why does this particular one go before council? And why is it in other cases when there's lot line adjustments, including lots where maybe a lot was only one parcel and then now it's four parcels? Like, why doesn't that go to council or planning commission? Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, will you?
Certainly, thank you. So unlike lot line adjustments between private properties, which can be approved administratively by the Public Works Department, this involves the conveyance of city owned property to a private entity. So that's why we have to bring it to the city council for your, for your action tonight.
Okay, thank you. We do have one more caller, but I believe they're still just trying to get in for public comment, but let's open the phone line and make sure they don't have a question for six B.
Ramon Rodriguez, I'll open your mic.
Yeah, is this a public comments yet?
No, it's still not. No, we're still at item six B.
I'll wait then.
Thank you. Wendy Brecken?
Hi, this is Wendy Brecken. I just had a question about the public conveyance to private individual, I guess. And what exactly is being conveyed? Is it the reservoir? It says North Orchard Reservoir Site Property Transfer. So that was just my question is, is, you know, what is the transfer of public land and why?
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and let city manager answer that or whoever he directs.
For those particulars, I'm going to invite Curtis Paxton, our Director of Utilities, to address that.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, and I'm going to have Justin Cole, our Assistant Director, who was involved with this transaction, uh, jump on and just give a brief, brief background on, on why we're transferring this property. Justin?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the city purchased the property around 2014 to build in the North Orchard Reservoir site. And inadvertently, a, a five inch PVC well was transferred with that property. The property owner reached out and had asked for the well to be returned. So we, we, so the lot line adjustment, it's roughly around thirty eight hundred square feet. That'll encompass the well adjacent to his property is what we're talking about. Not the entire property for the North Orchard Reservoir. The transfer of this property back to the individual will not impact the city's ability to construct, operate or maintain our North Orchard Reservoir when it's constructed.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll just leave it for motion. Can I get a motion on six B?
Stockton, I motion.
This is still about a second.
Thank you. Recall vote, please.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Sorry, yes.
Mayor Rula?
Hi. Okay, we will move to item seven, business from the floor. This is time to address the city council on issues that are not on this agenda, but that are within the council's subject matter jurisdiction. And we, please open the lines.
Ramon Rodriguez, I'll open your mic.
Oh, yes, this public comments now?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm Ramon Ariz, I'm calling from Truck, California, in regarding to, to Preston Wolf case that happened last month from a Vacaville police officer. I'm still wondering what, where's the justice for Preston Wolf? And is that officer disciplined or still on patrol? Because it's, it's, this is not a Vacaville thing. It's happening everywhere across the state and across the country. When is, that's going to start holding the Vacaville Police Department accountable? And when it started holding that officer accountable for his actions against an autistic teenager? This is sickening. You seem forced against a, a disabled teenager when he's a crime victim? And instead of helping him, he's being treated like a criminal? That's not okay. This is not something new. It happened in series two against a, a disabled teenager. The police came in and tried to help. Instead, they put false charges against the teenager. All because he, he want to run away to find Aaron to finish schoolwork? Is this what a police is doing to disabled people and especially people of color now? Violating the dignity and their civil rights? You guys needed to step up and hold the police department and, and to fire a police officer for assaulting? And causing mayhem on an autistic teenager? This got to stop. This madness, this police violence got to stop because we're fed up. A lot of people in Vacaville and across the state and whole country is fed up seeing a police officer punching an autistic teen who's been bullied by, by his aggressor. And also I'm fed up that, that police department spent over, over half a million dollars on a military vehicle with six wheels. That does not address anything with fighting crime. That six hundred thousand dollars should have gone to social programs and to anything that will help the community without putting a single cent to the police. Thank you.
Next caller, please.
Edward Russell, I'll open your mic.
So, you know me, I got solutions, challenges. We've been going for many years now back and forth about defund autism, abuse, brutality. Here we go. So first of all, white Americans need to first understand that this Jesus that they hail to is not white. That's the root cause of all of our problems. Because the thought process for white Americans is, is if this Jesus that I believe in is white, then therefore I'm forgiven for all of my sins because it says so right there in the, the little book you guys read. So we got to get past that notion and to, you know, it even says it in Proverbs, one of them, it says, "The one who oppresses the poor insults their maker." Nowhere in the book, as it says, one race is better than the other. So we got to stop living in this fantasy world that I am protected by this almighty being because we have the same colored skin. First and foremost, you don't even know what color this, the skin is of this person that you allege to hail to. So we got to understand that. And if we're going to actually move on and change this legacy, then legacy needs to be changed to make it appropriate so we can move forward with facts and not this, uh, this weird wonderment of, oh, look at me, I'm white, so I'm forgiven of everything because this maker is white. So let's start there and then maybe if you're honest and true with yourself, you can move forward and we can start having a real dialogue on how to create policy and changes that are for the people of this world and not for those who think, oh, I'm special or I have privilege because this cult that I believe in has this significant being that resembles me. Understand, this Jesus that you bow down to is not white. Nowhere in this book that you read does it say that this person is white. It is assumed that he may be Negro because his skin is bronze. I've never met one person, not even a Creole person, that would say, oh, you can mean I'm white. My skin is bronze unless you paid about thirty, forty-five dollars at a tanning booth. Then I can understand where you could come up with that fallacy thought process. So going forward, understand. Remove, separate state and church, like it says in your amendment. And then maybe we can start to have some real dialogue and make some change that's suitable for everyone in this world, no matter what color you are. You will?
Next caller?
Blanca, I'll open your mic.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to speak about the CART program and to see if you guys could really get together and find it because obviously we're in that need. And we want you to agendize that by May twenty fifth. And then on top of that, we want city council to add their name as a supporter of the Miles Hall Lifeline Act, AB nine eight eight. And Acting Chief of Police in, too much to learn? Must be, must amend or release a new statement taking accountability for the actions of the officer that hit Preston and that, that the officer must be fired immediately. I think these are pretty doable things. Also, I wanted to speak about, I'm not sure if VP PD is trying to use Fairfield PD to target me or was the situation? But I just want them to know that both departments can suck my dick and I yield my time.
Next caller, please.
Christian Sisneros, I'll open your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Okay, so yeah, I definitely wanted to ask or, or repeat the demands about agendizing this huge thing, the CART. By May twenty fifth, we did speak about this on the last meeting and how important it is. And if you haven't read about what CART is, there, well, you can really Google it, honestly. There are many resources out there that can, and cities that are using it right now actively and many programs like it. In short, it's a non-police response to calls for those dealing with mental health crisis, homelessness and substance abuse. And it's involving clinical intervention and people with behavioral health crisis. So we're trying to get police presence out of it. I hope you can hear us when we're saying that we're trying to save lives here. We don't want like another Elijah McLean. We don't want, we don't want another reason to protest. We're trying to prevent this. So I know that this is, I think, on the plan for the year, but I think that this is an emergency that needs to be agendized and acted on and treated like an emergency. We also would love if you, the city of Vacaville, add your name as a supporter of the Miles Hall Lifeline Act, AB nine eight eight. And I don't think Ian Schmutsler is even the acting police chief anymore, but we need someone to take accountability for the actions of the officer who hit Preston Wolf, who decided that that was an appropriate response to any situation. And I don't want to keep using these names and I don't want to keep adding these names, but Elijah McLean was also a person that has special needs. And they died because the officers didn't know how to handle him. And we just, we're just trying to save lives here. Thank you.
Next caller?
Danielle Shay, I'll open your mic. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, council, city staff, mayor, vice mayor. I'm here this evening to tell you very clearly and with no ambiguity, you need to do better for the people of Vacaville regarding transparency, representation and holding city employees accountable. And I, I know you know this, but specifically holding the police department accountable for the horribly misleading presentation that was given at the last council meeting regarding the assault and abuse of a K-9 officer. The fact that they regularly engage in assault of citizens and the lack of information regarding the officer that assaulted the boy with autism. I would like to give you the benefit of the doubt and assume that the police report at the last city council meeting was just as much of a surprise to you as it was to us. But unfortunately, we all know that isn't true, as evidenced by the decision to bury it at the end of the council meeting. I won't call anyone out by name, but we do know who makes the agenda and that was an incredibly poor choice on your respective parts. I was outraged by the decision on the part of the police department to only present information that presents them in a good light, even though there was plenty of information from several reports that are now public that show that the PD K-9 program is hugely flawed and abusive in some cases. But I was even more outraged, though, to see that there wasn't an agenda item tonight to amend the insulting presentation from last meeting. That just lets me know that council is more sympathetic to the image of their police department than they are toward their own citizens. So one thing I was happy to see was the proposal in the agenda to hire a consulting firm to help train staff on diversity, inclusion. But paying for a report isn't going to change much unless you make some cultural changes in the city of Vacaville. I would like to hear every single council member here this evening make a public statement that they will uphold city goal number five to promote community engagement and increased equity and inclusion by committing their support of the people of color in their community and that they will commit to protecting their citizens by rectifying the criminal activities of the police department. I am reiterating my request for the council and city manager to agendize the formation of a citizen oversight committee for the Vacaville Police Department and the implementation of an alternative response team to respond to crises that should not be criminalized. Have a good evening.
Next caller?
Ravante Robinson, I'll open your mic.
Yeah, so I just want to start off by saying letting the police run rampant and do whatever they do is not conducive to a place of peace. So I don't know why y'all signed that statement, if this is how things are still going to be. And I mean, I know there's a police audit going on, but how many more scandals? And how many more times are you going to hit headline news before anything's actually done? We're on our third police chief of the year and it's only May. So I'm calling on Vacaville to support AB nine eighty eight and to start the CART program here. A few people have already talked about it, so I don't have to go too much into detail about it. But I'm going to leave you with saying that if Preston Wolf was black, he would probably be dead and the white people would be trying to justify it on the Vacavillian page. And the, the real sad, the saddest thing about the Preston Wolf situation is that people have, some people in Vacaville still don't realize that at the end of the day, the only special needs person who would have been able to be justice is Ron Roulette's son.
Next caller?
Jennifer Piazza, I'll open your mic.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I apologize. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to reiterate, first of all, I laughed a little bit when somebody mentioned Vacaville's legacy because as you've heard from many of the callers, Vacaville's legacy is not necessarily fantastic for everyone in the community. I just wanted to reiterate the request that the compassionate alternative response team agenda, be agendized by May twenty fifth, that Vacaville City Council add your name as supporters of the Miles Hall Lifeline Act, AB nine eight eight. And then, you know, I found it really interesting, we, someone just mentioned the, the third police chief of the year. I found it really interesting, the selection of the police chief that this police chief has also been involved in, you know, audits in Fairfield and Vallejo. And I wouldn't exactly consider them shining examples of community policing. There's been a lot of controversies that can come out of both of them. And if you're looking for a lack of accountability, then maybe that is the right selection. But if you're looking to make changes and possibly regain the trust of the community that you claim that you want to have, you know, it's, it's an interesting choice. Thank you.
Next caller?
Ian Lee, I'll open your mic.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, councilmembers. Ron. I just wanted to piggyback off of the previous callers mentioning, uh, this police chief selection or interim or whatever this third one is that John Carley couldn't, you know, like handle over these issues. We finally have an audit going like Ravante mentioned, that's cool. But this is, this is simple. It's, it's, you know, quick trigger fingers. Easily like frightened officers brutalizing people. brutalizing people, animals, anything, right? Um, this, the solution is kind of simple. Adjust the training to not be so cowardly. And then you can save lives if you really cared for your city.
Okay, next caller.
James Shay, I'll open your mic.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, so just when I think this city can't get any dumber, I'm once again proved wrong. For almost a year now, citizens have been telling you over and over, the police department is racist and out here brutalizing people of color and the elderly. We all know about the dog incident and the child that was recently brutalized. So in response, we hire an interim chief that has worked in and been this chief or interim chief or assistant to the chief at two other notoriously racist departments, Fairfield and the Badge Benders in Vallejo. And on top of that, there's going to be an audit conducted, which, given the audit from the dog incident, it's going to be a sham and a farce. If they don't like the results, they'll just get another audit that gives them the results that they want, and it's just going to say how great they are and that they just need to file paperwork better. Um, I'd also like to echo what a lot of people have been saying about agendizing a CART program by May 25th, as well as a police oversight um, and undersight committee, a citizen police oversight and undersight committee, sorry. And then, um, I'm going to say this again, um, because apparently it got lost in his notes. Roy Stockton, can you please, it's been like three months now, denounce the three percenters. I mean, you, you sit there and you say you don't know what the symbols meant, but yet you're selling the merchandise on a website. Um, I don't know about you, but if I'm going to open a business or sell a product, I'm going to know all about that product. Um, just makes sense. Um, so please, again, just announce them. Thanks.
Next caller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
All right, uh, I'd like to go ahead and shout James out because that was awesome. Um, this place doesn't ever stop getting more dumb, for real, though. Um, so we have the K-9 report that, or the K-9 incident that happened. Everyone saw it with their own two eyes, the mishandling of the dog. Then we get three different investigations, three different reports. The city gets three different reports about what happened. And y'all choose the only one to present to the, to the public, the only one that showed there was no misconduct, while the other two showed that there was a lot of misconduct. That seems really selective to me. Looking into that company, they are very pro-police. Who would be surprised? Scandal after scandal after scandal. We show up to these city council meetings and we, I tell you the same thing every time. Every vulnerable group in Vacaville does not feel safe. That includes the elderly, that includes people of color, that includes, uh, uh, special needs, that includes even our furry friends. Where does the line, where do you draw the line? Oh, wait, I feel like I have an idea of who does feel safe. And they look like you, Ron, and Roy, who won't denounce the three percenters, who are racist, and everyone knows this. We tell you this every week, just announce them, everything would be cool. And thank you, that's it. Yeah, yeah, that's all I got.
Next caller, please.
Bradley Larson, I'll open your mic.
All right, I'd just like to call to council's attention a statement I made back in January about a, uh, when the police showed up in riot gear to a peaceful protest in which, uh, Officer Donaldson lied to the press afterwards. Uh, I'd like to cross-reference this to your police, uh, report when you guys came on at one o'clock in the morning and lied to the public after a seven-hour-long council meeting. I'd like to ask, how exactly does this build trust within the community or community engagement? Like, how are you trying to get the community more involved whatsoever if every time we confront you about literally the same exact thing happening over and over and over and over again, you don't do anything? Like, what is going on? Can you guys please, please, please do something to help the citizens of this community? Because this is embarrassing, quite frankly. Like, Vacaville has made national news once again for the police mistreating, um, this time it was an autistic teen. And what do you guys do? You come out full force and just lie about it again. That's all you ever do is lie to the public rather than accepting any sort of accountability so we can fix these issues and move together as a community. You're destroying my community. I'll say it again, I said it last week, I said it the week before, I said it the week before. I keep coming and saying the same exact thing and it's getting really stressful because I'm getting tired of repeating myself to a group of people who quite frankly do not seem to be listening to me. Ron, I'm looking at you specifically and Roy as well. Uh, I'm going to jump on the backs of other people, piggyback what they're saying, and dude, you need to denounce the three percenters, dude. If you have any, if you care about this community at all, you were listening to us and you are not listening to us. It's quite evident, quite evident, dude. So like, can you guys please, please, if you're trying to pass a, a resolution called "The Place of Peace," can you try to actually make the community more peaceful? That would be awesome. Like, if the resolution that you passed was actually an action in which you held the police more accountable, or maybe, I don't know, reallocated some funding towards the community that's suffering because of this current pandemic and the state of the world right now? Maybe if you guys could show a bit of compassion and empathy, you know, for the, the people in your community rather than siding with the police force that keeps brutalizing them and keeps making national news time and time again for the same exact thing that keeps happening? It's embarrassing, man. It's embarrassing. I'm getting pretty tired of it, to be, to be quite honest. And like, the fact of the matter is, it keeps happening time and time again. I can bring up, I could spend my entire three minutes bringing up examples of how the VVPD repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly harasses the community. Because people know, that's exactly what you guys do. You guys are trying to make a place of peace.
Thank you very much. Close public comment. And we will move to item 8A, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This is a continuation of the item from your last, uh, regular scheduled meeting regarding the CFD, uh, for the Lower Lagoon Valley Project. Uh, we have a series of resolutions and an ordinance for your consideration tonight. And just as a reminder, this particular item is focusing exclusively tonight on the formation of the CFD, not the merits of the project. So with that said, I will turn it over to Ken Matsumiya and our finance director. Excuse me, we do have, um, the text that we need to read into the record for the formation of the CFD, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. These are public hearings for the proceedings for the Community Facilities District, number 13, Lower Lagoon Valley. The hearings are, are to inquire for the formation of the district, the levy of special taxes in the district to finance the cost in certain public facilities and services, and the need to incur bonded indebtedness for the district. If anyone wishes to file written protest, they must file within the city clerk right now. And with that, I will, um, I'll move to city presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm actually going to pass it to our financial analyst for the presentation, Sheri Enos.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Um, I'm Sheri Enos from the Finance Department, also joined by the Finance Director, Ken Matsumiya. And on the phone, we have the consulting team that has been working with us on this formation. Uh, those on the phone include the city's municipal advisor, Dan Cox, from Canon Public Finance, Sarah Mares from NDS, the city's services special tax consultant and district administrator, Scott Ferguson with Jones Hall, our bond counsel, Susan Goodwin of Goodwin Consulting Group, who developed the rate and method of apportionment, and Dennis McQuire from Piper Sandler, the city's anticipated bond underwriter. Our item tonight includes resolutions and an ordinance for formation of Community Facilities District, number 13, Lower Lagoon Valley. Next slide, please, Crystal. Tonight's item is the continuance of the public hearings, which began during the April 27th council meeting, so much of this information will be a restatement of the content presented previously, but we'll also provide responses to the comments received since April 27th. We'll recap where this district is in the overall formation process and briefly revisit the slide depicting the district boundary before concluding with the scheduled next step. Next slide, please, Crystal. The CFD agenda item tonight has been continued in order to allow additional time for public review of the formation documents and further opportunity for comment. The hearings are being held as required by the government code cited here in order to allow all interested persons to comment on the intended CFD formation and debt issuance for facilities financing. The Melrose Act also requires the hearings in order to provide an opportunity for the registered voters or property owners within the district in future annexation area to formally submit protests. In the absence of a protest, the 50% or more of the registered voters or owners, the legislative body, in this case, the city council, is able to proceed with voting on the resolutions for the formation of the district in intention to incur debt. If the resolutions are adopted, a special election of registered voters is required, or landowners if no registered voters exist, allowing the legal owners of the property to cast ballots voting on the levy of special taxes and proposed debt issuance. Next slide, please. Following the April 27th continuance, we received four additional emails on this formation with some questions that we'd like to address here. One of the emails contained a PRA request for documentation on the former Lagoon Valley Assessment District, which finances made available for review. And another was a question seeking confirmation on the specific assessor parcel numbers listed on the petition, which we confirmed align with the boundary map parcels as recorded. The third email requested a copy of an appraisal and the fourth contained questions on the legal requirements for the formation. Finance does not have a current appraisal for the land because similar to the assessed value, this metric, this metric would not be necessary until the point in time when a bond issuance is being evaluated. Bonds will not be issued against the property as it stands today because the value of the property must be substantially higher than the amount of debt it secures, and special tax revenue would need to be available to pay the debt service on the bonds, two conditions which require substantial progress in the form of development on the property. The Melrose Act provides a minimum value to lien threshold and the city's underwriter will complete a thorough credit review, including obtaining an appraisal of the property in the months leading up to any issuance in order to ensure all state and city funding requirements are met. This information would then be shared with council for review prior to any debt issuance. We have discussed that there was a Lagoon Valley Assessment District formed back in the early 90s and taxes were levied for the properties within the district to finance the bond issuance. The bonds were issued for the purpose of funding pre-construction studies and design work. The final outstanding bonds associated with the district were called in 2017 and the tax levy ended the same year. There is no outstanding assessment district debt for this property. Previously, there were requests for additional information on the facilities that will be funded through the CFD bonds. The Melrose Act provides categories of authorized facilities such as flood and fire protection facilities, parks, open space, and roadways. The authorized facilities anticipated to be purchased for this particular development are listed in the Resolution of Formation, Exhibit A, and further details provided in the CFD report attachment to tonight's item, which includes a more specific list as well as the developer's cost estimates for facilities such as the fire station, booster pump station, and public roads. To clarify further, the facilities will be funded through the special tax calculated and levied for that purpose and subject to council approval with proceeds from bond issuance. The services, however, are funded through the separate services special tax. No bond proceeds will be utilized to fund public safety, lighting and landscaping, or park maintenance services for this district. Another area of concern is the impact this added development may have on citywide service levels. The requirement to form a CFD is intended to protect the city against services being negatively impacted or overextended. The CFD special taxes provide a funding mechanism to offset the costs the city will incur in serving this area, and the facility's special tax provides revenue for the city to acquire completed public improvements that are necessary to serve the development without overburdening existing infrastructure. Next slide, please. We have also had some follow-up questions seeking clarification on the legal necessity for this formation. In each of our presentations and staff reports, we focused on the statutory formation requirements under the Melrose Act, since these council proceedings are defined in the government code. The actions tonight are in furtherance of the statutory, statutory formation requirement. To discuss the obligations that exist outside of the Melrose Act between the city and the developer, I'll pass it over to the city attorney, Linda Stewart.
Thank you, Sheri. So just briefly, in addition to the statutory requirements that Sheri just mentioned, there are a variety of contractual obligations that provide for the formation of one or more financing districts to fund both services and infrastructure. The Green Belt Alliance Settlement Agreement requires formation of service districts for public safety and parks and open space. The Obligations Agreement, or rather, the First Amended Obligations Agreement, reiterates the requirements to form one or more service districts, again, to fund police and fire services and park operations and maintenance. The Obligations Agreement also requires the formation of an improvement district to fund public infrastructure if certain criteria are met. Those criteria are set forth on screen, and to comply with the agreement, the city has retained and relied on its own consulting team, as Sheri introduced earlier, and not consultants retained by the developer, to assist with the CFD formation process. The city's consultant team has worked in good faith with the developer's team to present a CFD that meets these requirements. So a CFD that complies with law, is otherwise regular in form, is consistent with city standards, and provides for, uh, the appropriate lien-to-value ratio. And additionally, the developer has advanced funding to cover the costs of city's retained consultants. So this really provides the contractual basis and obligation, uh, for the city to farm the CFD. And with that, I will pass it back to Sheri and ask for the next slide, please.
Thank you very much, Melinda. Uh, we have walked through this diagram a couple of times, so I'll try to keep it brief and just touch on the key aspects here. Um, this district began with the submission of a petition from the landowners to the city. In March, city council adopted the Resolution of Intention to Form a Community Facilities District and the Resolution of Intention to Incur Bonded Indebtedness. Immediately following those resolutions, the boundary map for the district was recorded with the county. A notice of public hearings was published advertising the hearings, which began on April 27th. Following the vote to continue the topic, the hearings notice was published a second time detailing the extension of the item to tonight's meeting. In addition to the hearings, there are two separate actions on the agenda tonight, which have been combined at the request of the property owners to waive the waiting period for the election. After the hearings, council will consider the adoption of the resolutions to form the district and declare the necessity to incur bonded debt. If those resolutions are adopted, a special election of the property owners will be called. The election ballots have been distributed and returned to the city clerk so she can open them and share those results tonight. And next, council may adopt a resolution declaring the results of the election, the validity of prior proceedings, and directing the recording of the special tax lien. The final step for this item tonight will be the introduction or the first reading of the ordinance levying special taxes. Follow-up tasks will include recording the notice of special tax lien and adoption of the ordinance, the second reading. The consideration of issuing bonds would also be a follow-up item that will be brought back for council's review, but will not occur on a specific timeframe since it's dependent upon development progress. Next slide, please. The boundary for the Lower Lagoon Valley District is shown here. The development area is south of the pond, which is the blue oval at the top of the picture. The red line defines the Vacaville city limit and the white line is the recorded CFD boundary. Within the CFD boundary, the shaded gray area is improvement area number one, while the green is improvement area number two. The red shape is the fire station site and exempt from special taxes. Outside of the district, the two purple areas show the future annexation area, and these parcels would only join the district and be subject to special taxes after petitioning to do so and being granted council approval. The special taxes discussed tonight will only affect the area within the CFD boundary line, not the rest of the residents in Vacaville. Next slide, please. The steps necessary to complete the district formation are shown here. Council's first requested action was to adopt the Resolutions of Intention, which was completed on March 23rd. As part of those resolutions, council set the date for the required public hearings, which began April 27th. In addition to the continuance of the public hearings, the other steps included in tonight's item are the adoption of the resolutions to form the district, the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness, and submission of the levy of tax to qualified electors. A declaration of the results of the special landowner election and the first reading of the ordinance levying special taxes within the district would be the final steps for this item. Also on the agenda tonight, but not part of the formation proceedings included in this presentation, is Agenda Item 9A, which includes the Resolution for Approval of the Form of the Acquisition Agreement. form of the acquisition agreement. This is a document that will describe the process the city and developer will follow to construction transfer ownership of authorized facilities purchased with bond proceeds or special tax revenue. The final step for district formation will be a second reading of the ordinance, scheduled for the May 25th council meeting, which is typically completed as a consent item. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we have our consulting team on the line to assist in answering questions on these materials and during the public hearings. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the presentation again. I will open it up to public comment. I see a few hands up.
Caller ending in 724, I'll open your mic.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. Just to make sure that we're very clear, we need to announce that we're opening the public hearing.
Okay, I thought that's what we were doing. I'm going to now open the public hearing to receive comments and questions or protests from any interested parties. Go ahead and open up the phone lines.
Caller ending in 724, I'll open your mic. You may need to press your unmute button in order to accept your microphone being opened. Oh, star nine on your phone.
Caller, you have to press star nine or unmute. Why don't we jump to the next? Oh, nope, we got it. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, and respectfully, City Council, this is Roberto Valdez, longtime resident. I'm gonna, before I make any comments, I want to request for an extra minute because I'm gonna touch very quick on four items that I think you need to be aware, especially the new city council people, okay? And I respect you for what you're doing, but I need to voice my concerns. Are you ready? Are you there?
Yes, sir, your time's going.
Okay, well, thank you. Let me know. I wanted to vote one minute at least. Anyway, first, I want to thank you all for allowing a tabling last time meeting. As you know, especially Mr. Ken, Ms. Yama, Ms. Yami, who was very nice to give me, send me an email informing me how it was publicized in the past two weeks, and especially the council members who voted to table it, okay? Again, the other thing I want to say, number two, is I'm concerned about, again, about the impact that this Lower Lagoon Valley project is gonna have. I am very concerned about the pipeline infrastructure that you were proposing as part of the maintenance thing. I know the police and department are necessary for that area, but I'm concerned with the impact it's gonna have to the Lagoon Valley Park with regards to the water usage and sewage system you're implementing, maybe electrical too, also the disturbance to the soil with regards to the terrain reconfiguration, impact to the habitat, wildlife habitat, especially the birds, the targeted species that have been brought to your attention in the past with the multi-species habitat, proposed habitat conservation plan of Solano County. I'm speaking about springtime hawks, boring owls, tri-color blackbirds, tiger salamanders. And as part of that, the habitat itself, which is especially the lake, whether you see it as natural or artificial, I see it as natural, in terms of being polluted or chemically or right, air pollution from this project while you're constructing it after it already takes place, the recreational, lack of recreational access that will happen during the construction phase, number five, I'm really concerned how you're balancing the measure, measure seven, measure I, and the developer's fee, who's gonna be paying for that? You need to clarify that for the public, please. You haven't done it. Number three, an impact to the, within the project, regards again, water usage.
You're out of time, sir. Thank you very much for your comments. Next caller, please.
Caller ending in 965, I'll open your mic.
You have to clear your mic.
Caller, go ahead and press star six to accept your microphone being muted.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I was hitting the nine. This is Danny Wells, a Vacaville resident, and first, I would like to thank Mr. Mayor and City Council for your time this evening. I want to start by commending the staff, especially Ken and Sheri, for their comprehensive 150-page document that accompanies this proposal to create a CFD. That includes a concerning $93 million bond. This represents a significant effort, and I also commend the city council for your time in reviewing this lengthy document. And the document for the Agenda A, I didn't find any projected sales prices with the 300 homes and 75 affordable units being considered. Without this specific information, if we use the average home sales price in Vacaville of $570,000, or $313 per square foot for discussion purposes, the Lagoon Valley proposed homes with the highest number of units is a 3,500-square-foot single-family detached home at the average sales price of $313. That would put these homes in the million-dollar price range. The 1% base property tax assessment would be approximately $10,000 for these homes. Like other Vacaville homeowners, my current home property tax bill has 16 additional tax levies on top of the 1% assessment, and these 16 extra assessments combined add an additional 15% tax over my base tax. For this proposed development, using current Vacaville property evaluations, these proposed Lagoon Valley 3,500-square-foot homes would add an additional 45% tax assessment to cover just the bond assessment alone, not to mention the other taxes for water, schools, and a variety of bonds. Combining all these taxes, it would have the homeowner paying 60% additional taxes over base, which is indefensible compared to the other Vacaville homeowners currently paying 15% over base. In the 17 years I've lived here, several developers have considered Lagoon Valley projects, and none have come to fruition because they couldn't find a cost-efficient model. So I request you vote against passing this resolution, work with the developer, and only proceed if it includes an affordable bond levy in line with other property owners in Vacaville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Alicia Minion, I'll open your mic. Hi, Alicia Minion. I want to thank council and staff and the applicant for allowing for the two-week extension that allows us to conduct additional research to uncover the concerns that was detailed in an email by the VFFAGE. I hope that you all had an opportunity to read it. I'm asking that this resolution not be considered. And number one, I wanted to raise that the city has implemented a debt policy. In that debt policy, it's very clear that the council should not approve debt that'll unreasonably burden taxpayers. And I'd like to hear from staff on why they believe that this particular CFD, which includes not only a tax for fire, police, park, and other services, but also includes a CFD improvement area number one and two, that is about a combined $93 million in bonds. I'd like to know why you believe that this particular tax does not pose any burden on taxpayers. I can't imagine what explanation you're gonna give me, but I want to give you some quotes out of your debt policy. Long-term debt financings are appropriate when the following conditions exist. One of the conditions is when total debt does not constitute an unreasonable burden to the city and its taxpayers and ratepayers. It is a policy goal for the city to protect taxpayers, ratepayers, and constituents by utilizing conservative financing methods and techniques to as to obtain the lowest practical borrowing cost. Now, in the staff report, it indicates that this not, this up to $93 million in bonds can have a maturity of up to 35 years. On the state treasurer's website, there's all, there's a spreadsheet of Melrose bonds that have been issued statewide since, I think, at least 1993. This is really one of the highest bond issues, and it's also one of the longest maturities. So I think that says something. Now, there's some new information I wanted to share with you before I run out of time. I wrote to staff this morning because the petition, it lists lots and parcel numbers that are involved in the CFD. Lot 11 includes four parcels, but on the deed, where Triad actually acquired this land in December 2019, it is only one parcel, and...
Alicia, you're out of time, I'm sorry. I will direct staff if we can answer the question.
Sure, this is Ken Matsumi. I know there's quite a few questions related to that $93 million, and I just wanted to emphasize that that's a not-too-exceed amount, and the same thing with the 35 years. And we do have a team of consultants on the line, and Susan Goodwin, our special tax consultant, I'm gonna ask her if she can kind of explain the calculation that went into that $93 million.
Yes, hi, Mayor, City Council members. The rule with the bond authorization when a CFD is formed is simply not to ever have it serve as an artificial cap. If the special tax is paid by the homeowners, could support additional bonding capacity and provide additional improvements that would serve them out in Lagoon Valley, it would be very unfortunate that the only reason they couldn't get those improvements is that a bond authorization that was too low was selected. And so the rule when, the law requires that a bond authorization is established, and basically you want to do it conservatively so you never run into this false or artificial cap. And so it was calculated, assuming a 3% bond interest rate, which is historically never been seen before, just so, because the rates that are currently, the bonds are selling, have never been seen before either. So if the rates continued to go down, we wanted to test and make sure that that bonding capacity could be accommodated in the bond authorization. And then, in addition to that, there was a 25% buffer added to get to the $93 million. And the reason for that is if there were ever, if there was ever bond refunding and bonds could get raided and go even lower than that, or if larger homes were built, there's a higher tax for larger homes, and so if there were more large homes built, that would produce additional capacity as well. So that 25% buffer, again, just ensures that the CFD would never run into an artificial cap. So it is very conservative. It's not expected that that many bonds will ever be sold. But if there were more improvements needed and the special taxes could support them, you won't run into that as a false cap.
Thank you. Edward Russell is up next.
Edward Russell, open your mic.
So yeah, I think this is a great time to look at goals, go to strengthen the local economy, goal for maintain effective and efficient services, and it looks like there's gonna be about $800,000 spent on law enforcement service. Someone spoke earlier that, you know, these homes are gonna be like a mill out the gate, you know, common sense, and I'm not trying to, you know, slap anybody in the face with your common sense now, but common sense, forming a loan limit is like $540,000 for a working family, so they'll never afford any of these homes, and this is where I'm going with that. So what's probably gonna live out here is probably your self-inflamed, privileged, white, racist, terrorist supporter Americans. So why allocate almost $1 million to something that's never gonna be used? Most of those people that's gonna get paid by this service probably live there, so they're not gonna police themselves, they're not gonna do anything, there's not gonna be any problems, because as a society, we assume and we point fingers, and the planning commission allows for the negative things to happen in certain establishments in certain parts of the city. So out here, these things are gonna happen, there's not gonna be a liquor store, there's not gonna be a pool hall, there's not gonna be a bowling alley, there's not gonna be any place where things can happen that you guys forced to happen. But again, common sense says you can allocate that mill somewhere else. Why put it there and those are gonna be the same people that live there? I just think that's a waste of time, and it goes against goal two, and, you know, these goals are coming back to slap you guys in the face, kind of like that PC proclamation thing, you're not even living by it. So if you're really gonna stay on goal two, like, what is there for, I think you need to reallocate that $800,000 for this somewhere else. I think that's just gonna be a waste of money, and basically, you're paying the people to live there, because those are the people that live there are gonna be working for this particular land. I hope you get the right decision going forward.
Next caller.
Caller ending in 906, I'll open your mic. Caller, you may need to press star six to accept your microphone being opened.
Hi, this is Alyssa DeCaro with the Lagoon Valley Conservancy. First, as a cleanup, I wanted to ensure that the council received the letter from our president that was sent first at the initial meeting and then later this afternoon, just to ensure it's incorporated as a part of the public record. Second, I would like to note that the lot line discrepancy that was referenced by the caller that was cut off needs to be addressed further because it's our belief that this should be tabled, because you can't proceed with this when discrepancy in the deed has not been recorded. Second, we'd like to know what alternatives have been examined, and if they weren't, why not? Because you're not obligated to say yes to the CFD, there are alternatives that should be available. And the attorney referenced that, or inferred, that it would be going against the Green Belt Settlement Agreement. However, material changes have been made to that agreement without the knowledge of Green Belt Alliance or their permission, so we would argue that that has been rendered moot and should be addressed. And finally, if anyone is in breach of contract, it would be Triad, they haven't met any of their thresholds, so the city has no obligation to perpetuate this plan through this action tonight. You can table it, either because the deed hasn't been reconciled, or because the developer hasn't met their requirements. And finally, in closing, what that means is if you say no, and this project is just allowed to die, as it should, then the developer can do what any other private party would be required to do, and that is go back to the drawing board, do a study on current data and prepare a new environmental impact report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Wendy Brecken. This is Wendy Brecken, and I just wanted to mention that you can look up grand juries and Melrose bonds, and you can find a number of communities across California that have had problems with excessive Melrose bonds. And my concern is that in 2016, the infrastructure that is proposed to be built was supposed to be anywhere from $17 to $25 million, I believe, and now it's gone up to, in just five years, to $71 million. So that appears to be excessive. So that's, one question is, how did the cost increase so much? And then, in addition, other grand juries of other Meloos have recommended oversight committees so that they could be monitored, and an annual audit would be good to ensure there's no misappropriation. And this is, as others have said, this development has not happened in 30 years when the developer was supposed to build, build the infrastructure himself at his own cost or at its own cost. So I'm not sure why now the developer's gonna be reimbursed plus have profit for infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you want to direct questions?
There's quite a few in there. I'll defer to...
I'll defer to to Kim Matsumi and the team for some of the questions about the particulars.
Sure, so kind of going in order, I think the first question had to do with like the lot line adjustment and sort of that process. And so for that, Tim Burke, our Assistant Director of Public Works. Tim, do you want to take that before we jump to the next question?
Sure thing. So when Triad purchased the property from the Lagoon Valley Residential, which was LLC, which was the previous owner. They subsequently did a lot line adjustment. They adjusted lots 10 and 11. And when they did that, they lots 10 and 11 now comprised additional, they mixed up the assessor parcel numbers. And so that's why it's the assessor parcel numbers has changed on the petition versus the purchase from the Lagoon Valley LLC because of this subsequent lot line adjustment. Does that answer your question?
Perfect, thank you. Ken, did you want to finish the other answers?
Sure, so there was also a question in there as far as the CFD. Kind of what are the other alternatives that were pursued or why they weren't pursued? And so for the obligations agreement, it requires that the city form an improvement district to fund the public facilities and services. And really, there are only two districts that are really appropriate under state law. So one's an assessment district. And then another one is the community facilities district. And so assessment districts, I mean, they do have structural limitations, including their lack of efficient annexation procedure. And kind of considering that we have future annexations potentially with this development. And they make it makes them hard to use for for new master plan development. And especially in more recent years because of the passage of 218. And also from court decisions related to the types of projects that assessment districts can finance and the way that those assessments may be allocated to the properties in the district. And, you know, for those reasons, the flexibility of the CFD is the reason why we've gone with this approach. And, you know, they are widely used throughout the state, even within this county. And so if we're just focusing on Solano County, Dixon, Vallejo, Rio Vista and Fairfield, they all have CFDS to either fund services or facilities. And so that's the reason why staff is going for the CFD. And the developers also had proposed forming a CFD as well as the financing option.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back to Robert.
Robert Heron, I'll open your mic.
Hello, yes, this is Robert Heron. I'm President of the Solano County, Solano Conservancy. I'm also a resident of California, of Vacaville. And I was just interested in the utility district that exists now. Would this CFD replace that utility district that was put in place in 1990? I understand that the funds were repaid and that they were used for, I don't know, the 11 million dollars were used for maybe drawings or some kind of planning. Also, the sewer, I don't believe is involved or the sewer was put off in the original EIR. And it said that it would be added or included in the future environmental impact report. And to date, I don't believe that it's part of that. So that's a question that needs to be cleared up before anything can go forward on the CFD. I'm very leery about Triad. They've done this over and over, the bait and switch. I don't believe the golf course is going to be even affordable. So they're going to ask come back and ask for additional housing to pay for this. And I just want everybody to be aware on the City Council that that's a possibility. So that 1,025 homes that are proposed could go up because of this. So please just look at this with eyes wide open and with the track record that the developer has. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I see no other comments from public hearings, so I'm going to close public hearings. And I will ask if we have received any written protests.
We've received no written protests from any of the landowners.
Okay, thank you. I will ask the council. There are three items before you today. One A is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Vacaville of formation of the proposed Community Facilities District, which will establish the district. B, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Vacaville determining necessity to incur bonded indebtedness, which will determine the need to issue bonds and other indebtedness to finance the proposed public facilities. C, the resolution of the City Council and the City of Vacaville calling a special election, which will call for the property owner to vote and approve the special tax and proposed bonded indebtedness and the appropriations limit for the district. Because the property owners have waived the waiting periods and other requirements related to the elections as permitted by law, the special election will be held at this evening's meeting. Do I have any council members that would like to make a motion? I have Councilmember Wiley.
Is this the time just to ask questions and talk about the whole discussion that we've just heard?
Yeah, no, this is it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we use I so I just have a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. I do, you know, the one thing that answered the question that was asked that wasn't really answered was related to the public debt. And why does the staff believe that this isn't too much debt? You know, in my district already, there's one CFD. And I mean, that's a one big thing that people keep talking about a lot. You know, how much it goes up and how it affects them. And to me, listening to Mr. Wells's comments about the cumulative effect of all these and the CFD on top of it. I just really am concerned that it would really be onerous for any homeowner. So I do want to first get an answer to that. Why does staff believe it isn't too much? And because we do have a section out there, it's good to see that there was a section for affordable housing. But when you put all these other taxes on top of it, it's not really going to be affordable. And the other thing that I noticed on the tables was it escalates by 2% every year. And the first increase of 2% starts in either June or July of 2021. So before anything is even done, the amounts in the table are going to increase by 2%. And then next July, June, they will increase that amount increases by 2%. Not the base amount, but every year, the the current amount increases by 2%. And so I just want an answer to that. How can we say as a city council, if our debt policy says not to approve debt that wouldn't be unreasonably burdensome to a homeowner? How can we do this to the people that would be purchasing these homes?
Ken Matsumi again. So regarding like the debt that it's going to place on the homeowners. So when the the RMA is done and the amount of tax is being calculated, there is a calculation where, you know, by rule of thumb, you don't want that to you don't want the debt, the tax that has to be paid to be greater than around 1.8% of the property value. And so that does go into the calculation that our special tax consultant puts into this. And then related to the 2% and it going up in starting with July of 21, that was with the assumption that we were going to start the levy with the fiscal year 22. The fiscal year 20, sorry, fiscal year 22. But the bonds aren't going, well, the special taxes is going to be levied until fiscal year 23. And so that that 2% and what's in the RMA, that was with the assumption that it was actually going to be levied in fiscal year 22. And Susan Goodwin, I'm not sure if you'd like to add something further related to kind of the RMA calculation and sort of that 1.8% rule of thumb?
I I will just say 1.8 is fairly standard throughout Northern California right now. We're seeing that as the maximum rate that it that is being set all over Solano County region, Sacramento region, pretty much Northern California. Southern California actually goes to a total of 2% of the property value. Northern California has never really accepted rates that high. So this is based on the 1.8%. And the only other thing I point out is there is also an option for a partial prepayment in the in the special tax formula. And the reason that's in there is if values are not as high as the developer currently anticipates by the time homes are being sold, the partial prepayment would be an option to for the builder or developer to buy down the special taxes and actually have a lower special tax rate even before they start selling homes. So they're they're sensitive to that. I mean, ultimately, they have to market the homes. And anytime I've ever seen where the rates turned out because values weren't what they thought, if the rates turned out to be too high. We do have some CFDs where the the builders and developers will will prepay a portion of the of the tax before they even start selling homes.
So when you talk about the 1.8%, is that calculated what it is at the onset, like right now? Because when you push these out for like 20 years or 30 years, it goes up so high so quick. And that's what the people in District 6 are seeing with the CFD, you know, down here. Because each year it goes up. And that's not the only tax we pay because there's so many other things with our property taxes. So so my question then is the 1.8% calculation at the time of the purchase of the home or over the life of the home?
So it actually is a if the rate and method of apportionment that's before you tonight is actually showing dollar amounts. The the tax actually cannot be based, ultimately, it cannot be percentage based. So the taxes in the rate and method of apportionment do not say 1.8%. The dollar amounts that are in there are based on the current estimate of sales prices, taking out all the other overlapping taxes, including the base 1% property tax. And it's the delta that's left to bring it up to 1.8% that is reflected in the dollar amounts that are in the tax formula tonight. That it's in there that's before you tonight, I should say, to be adopted. If values increase, usually in California, values increase at a faster rate than 2% on average. They certainly go up and down in the recession, they went down and then back up afterwards. And again, if ever there's a situation where the dollar amount relative to the values are too high, they can be brought down. The 2% escalator is something that homeowners generally are used to seeing in California because the property tax most times, except in real recessionary periods, goes up 2%. And we take calls from homeowners all the time. The 2% is is not usually something that causes a lot of upset because they're used to seeing the property tax also go up at 2%. So and the reason for that 2% escalator is to generate the same amount of revenues. If you if you were solving for the same amount of infrastructure to be funded and you didn't have a 2% escalator, the starting tax rate in year one would actually need to be about 18% higher to generate the same amount of money. So the 2% escalator is generally requested all over the state because it allows the starting special tax rate in year one to be kept almost 20% lower.
Okay, I so I have one other question as long as I'm on here. So on the other chart, it showed a price for police and fire. And so the fire was projected as a price per acre, $6,022 per acre. And the police was projected at $652 per unit. So why was there a different measurement for fire and police?
The reason for that is because the obligations agreement that was signed so long ago dictated exactly that. It it specified, it got very, very specific. I wasn't involved and I don't think many of the people that are involved in this transaction were involved at the time. But it got very specific as to how those costs were to be spread. And it dictated that it was spread on a per acre basis. So that had to be translated. In the calculation of the 1.8%, the the city's consultant, other consultant translated that into a per unit amount so that we could figure out what was left in the 1.8% in each of the unit types.
All right, and so that's my questions for right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to motion that we consider the resolutions that I ran or that I read for everyone in that order. Can I get a second?
Stockton, I second.
Can we have a roll call, please? Oh, yeah, no, we have to vote first. Yeah, go ahead, roll call. I apologize.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
No.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Mayor Rowlett?
Hi. Okay, so with that, at this time, I ask the city clerk to open up the ballots and announce the results of the election.
The envelope I opened first is for improvement area number two. And all votes are in the affirmative.
All of them?
Yes. improvement area, I'm sorry. Just opening improvement area number one now. And all of those votes are in the affirmative as well.
Okay, is that all?
That's all.
Thank you. Seeing that the election results are in favor of levying the special taxes, the establishment and the appropriations limit, the incurred bonds indebtedness. So we may now proceed to the final actions of the district. I'll entertain motion to adopt the resolution declaring results of the special election and directing the recording of the notice of special tax lien. Do I have a motion?
Stockton, I motion.
Thank you. I'll second it. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
No.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Mayor Rowlett?
Yes. City clerk, will you please read the ordinance style title?
We need a motion for the ordinance.
I apologize. I ran out of paperwork.
Sorry.
Okay, so can I have a motion for the ordinance?
Stockton, I motion.
And I'll second. Can we have a roll call vote for the ordinance?
Councilmember Wiley?
So what's the ordinance exactly? Just saying what we just did?
The ordinance is an ordinance levying a special tax within the Community Facilities District that was just formed.
Well, I will just continue with my no.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
No.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Rowlett?
Yes. So now, please, city clerk, will you read the ordinance title?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Vacaville levying special tax within City of Vacaville Community Facilities District number 13, Lower Lagoon Valley.
Thank you very much. We will move to item 9A. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item is a carryover from the previous item related to the Lower Lagoon Valley with regards to the acquisition agreement and with regards to the acquisition agreement and a public improvement agreement. Both Groom and Walter, Director of Public Works and Ken Matsumiya, Director of Finance, will be making presentations.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Our Assistant Director for Public Works, Tim Burke, will be making the presentation. But myself and I'm pretty sure Ken Matsumiya will be available to answer any questions. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Groom. As Groom said, my name is Tim Burke. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm here to present the next item along with Ken Matsumiya, our Finance Director. The first portion of this item concerns a public improvement agreement for Lagoon Valley, which is related to the backbone infrastructure that is needed to be installed for Lagoon Valley. The second portion concerns the acquisition agreement, which relates to the CFD you just took action on earlier. Next slide. As you're aware, this concerns the Lagoon Valley project, which consists of 1,025 residential units, 750,000 square foot business village, town center, championship golf course, fire station, and and eight acre neighborhood park. The development shown here is all south of Lagoon Valley Road and south of the lagoon. To begin this development, the developer needs to construct several backbone infrastructure facilities, including a water reservoir, which is located there at the bottom of your screen. Next slide. And this slide depicts everything north of Lagoon Valley Road and and north of the lake, too. This shows the location of other backbone infrastructure facilities, including a water booster pump station, which is needed to push the water to the reservoir, sewer lift station, which will pump sewer north over the hill to existing facilities that extend off of Butcher Road, and sewer and water mains along the east side of the Lagoon Valley Park. Next slide. In accordance with the subdivision map act, the city and developer have negotiated a public improvement agreement that will authorize the developer to construct backbone this backbone infrastructure, including the reservoir, booster pump station, sewer lift station, and water and sewer mains. The public improvement agreement also provides a mechanism for the developer to fund inspection costs. And finally, the agreement requires surety bonds to be posted by the developer to ensure that the developer finishes this project and pays their contractors. Next, I'll turn the next portion of the presentation over to Ken. Ken?
Thanks, Tim. Good evening, council. Next slide, please, Crystal. As mentioned earlier, in addition to the public improvement agreement, council is also being asked to approve the acquisition agreement related to CFD 13, Lower Lagoon Valley. This agreement between the city and developer identifies the improvements to be acquired by the city and paid for by the CFD. It details the manner in which improvements are to be constructed and transferred to the city with inspection, review, and oversight from the Director of Public Works and his designees. It identifies the funding sources for acquiring the improvements. So for this project, that would be the CFD tax revenue and the bond proceeds. And the acquisition agreement also outlines certain parameters related to the status of completed infrastructure, development progress, property value, along with other criteria the developer must meet prior to the issuance of any bond. Next slide, please. The following two slides are intended to provide a high level overview of the steps that are generally involved in the acquisition of improvements, issuance of bonds and reimbursement of the developer. This first slide is for the acquisition of improvement. So the public improvement agreement would need to be approved by council and signed by the developer and the city. The developer would begin construction. The city would regularly inspect the improvements as they are being constructed. The improvements would get completed, and the city would accept the improvements per the public improvement agreement or subdivision improvement agreement. Next slide. For the issuance of bonds and eventual reimbursement of the improvement acquisition cost to the developer, the acquisition agreement would need to be approved by council and signed by the developer and city. The developer would need to meet the bonding requirements outlined as part of the acquisition agreement. A full credit review of the project would be performed by the bond underwriter, and an appraisal would be prepared prior to each bond sale by an independent licensed appraiser. The item would be brought back to council for review of the proposed bond series authorization. And then if approved, bonds would be sold, and the proceeds would be deposited with the third party fiscal agent. And then the developer would submit requests for reimbursement for the completed or substantially completed improvements. And then finally, the city would review and, to the extent approved, reimburse the developer solely from the available CFD fund. Next slide, please. And I'll pass it back to Tim to close out.
So our recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into a public improvement agreement with Triad Lagoon Valley LLC, where the installation of infrastructure detailed on improvement plans, approve the plans and working details for the subject projects, and adopt the resolution approving the acquisition agreement related to the City of Vacaville Community Facilities District Number 13, Lower Lagoon Valley. With that, we're open to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. We're going to open up public comment. I see no public comment. We'll close public comment and entertain motion.
Uh, questions?
Uh, Councilmember Silva, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, how long is this process expected to take? And in the end, all will all of this be is hidden from view by the public once the work's complete?
So again, this is Tim Burke with the Public Works Department. The well site and sewer lift station and the reservoir, while being kind of tucked back into certain portions of the valley, it'll still be visible ultimately as you utilize the park. Now, being visible as you drive on Interstate 80, there will be provisions to provide additional birmingham and landscaping features that will try and hide a lot of the development.
Okay, I'll entertain motion. I'll I'll motion it forward if anyone wants to second it.
This is Stockton, I'll second it.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Sorry about that. I'm not used to going first. I was trying to find my mute button. Uh, no.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva? Councilmember Silva? Thanks. Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Mayor Rowlett?
Yes. The four two, move forward to item nine E. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This is the annual 2122 annual action plan for community development block grant funds. Daniel Herta from our Housing Services Department will make a presentation.
Thank you, Aaron. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Tonight's item for council's consideration is for approval of the Community Development Block Grant 2021-2022 Program Year Annual Action Plan after receiving comments from tonight's meeting. Next slide, please. The CDVG funds are received through an annual formula allocation. The main objectives of the CDVG program are to provide decent housing and suitable living environments and expand economic opportunities. Funds are targeted to primarily primarily low and moderate income persons, and the city has been an entitlement community since 1988. Locally, CDVG funds are used to address priority needs in the community that are outlined in the five-year consolidated plan within the statutory goals. The current five-year consolidated plan covers 2020 to 2025 and and establish the goals and priorities for the five-year timeframe. Uh, next slide, slide please. The preparation of the con plan included a six-month planning process that included public outreach, resulting in needs and priorities and specific goals. It was adopted on May 12, 2020 by City Council. A summary description of the 2020-2025 con plan, planning process, and goal summary is included as attachment one of the staff report. The con plan specifically identifies using CDVG funds to support youth services and improve public facilities. Next slide, please. In addition to statutory requirements for eligible activities, another restriction of the CDVG program funds is the annual funding limits. The staff report provides an example based on an assumed
Hey, I don't mean to interrupt you, but can you speak up a little bit more? We're having a hard time hearing.
Yes. Um, so the staff report provides an example based on an assumed 550,000 annual allocation. Restrictions on the funds include a maximum of 15% of annual allocation for public services. Funding for the Vacaville Neighborhood Boys and Girls Club and Eleven are considered public services. A maximum of 20% for CDVG program planning and administration. This is for staff services and supplies to administer the CDVG program. The balance of the six, the balance of the 65% is to be used for improving public facility facilities projects. Examples include the ADA sidewalk improvements, Merchant Street improvements, and the Brown Street Office Building and Park Recreation. Next slide, please. The con plan goals are carried out each year through the annual action plan, which provides a more concise summary of actions, activities, and specific federal and nonfederal resources that will be used to address priority needs and goals identified in the con plan. This year, the annual plan covers July 1, 2021 through July 30, 2022. The city has been allocated $533,880 for the 2021-22 program year. In addition, it is proposed to budget prior year's unallocated and unexpended funds of $529,100 for a total of $1,062,980. The table on this slide shows the proposed activities, the annual funding limits, and the con plan goal to be met, including funding, planning, and administration of the program, youth public services, funding for Vacaville Neighborhood Boys and Girls Club and Eleven, adding additional funds for the Brown Street Office Building and Park Recreation improvements, continuing to pay the CDVG Section 108 loan payment, and funding for potential facility improvements to the Vacaville Social Service Center located on Eldridge Avenue due to the aging condition of the facility. Uh, next slide, please. The public notice process includes the required 30-day comment period, which began on April 14 and will end on May 13. The notice announced that the annual action plan was available, and how to submit comments was noticed in Spanish and in English in the Vacaville Reporter. And copies of the notice and draft plan were made available at several locations and sent to a CDVG email server. There have been no verbal or written comments received at this time. Any comments provided this evening will be incorporated into into the annual action plan and sent to HUD as required by the May 15 deadline. Uh, next slide, please. There are no funds requested for this item as all funds come directly from HUD CDVG funding. This item meets strategic plan goal three, protect Vacaville's quality of life. And staff is recommending that council accept any public comment and provide any comments they may have in the 2021-2022 annual action plan and approve the plan with any comments received. And next slide, please. So that concludes staff's presentation. We are happy to answer any questions you may have. I believe Anna Eaton with the Vacaville Boys and Girls Club and a representative from Eleven are also here this evening. If you have any questions for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. We're going to go ahead and open up public comment.
Felicia Minion, I'll open your mic.
Oh, sorry, I didn't have a comment on this. My hand was up for the Lower Lagoon Valley Acquisition Agreement. That's why my hand.
Okay, Nick Collerden, please.
Edward Russell, I'll open your mic.
So, um, I'm I don't even know where I'm going with this. I just want to point it out. So I know they're asking input from the community. And since sometimes, well, over the past couple of years, we speak and nothing happens. I just want to make this for us noted. Uh, I understand this money is not city money. It's coming from HUD. Okay, that's great. But the, um, the one of the tables that were shown in the presentation uh, showed a dollar figure of about 75,000, I think it was. I don't know the exact number. And that was for the entire, that was for the entire program for a particular youth program or resource or service, 75. Um, that bothers me because it just reiterates and drives home the preschool to prison pipeline theory. The state of California is spending 70,000 per inmate, 70,000 per inmate, when here in this city, we're only spending 70,000 for an entire group of young folks. I mean, I know as rational adults, you can see the problem here. And again, I know this is not public. I understand that. My point is just, can we start realizing and and looking at things the way they aren't represented? And why we have to make a change and why you hear constantly, constantly, constantly people saying, come on, we got to do a better way to spend this money that we have and stop giving 40% to one particular entity who just beats kids up and murders black people for no reason. So again, I'm just saying, the proof is right there. The numbers are in front of you. They don't lie. They tell the truth. So 75,000 for an entire group of people, 75,000 or whatever that number is for one individual, the house or her in a correctional facility. So please just pay attention to that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to bring it back to City Council. Councilmember Silva.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Actually, thank you for the comments from the public. You know, I think when we talk about how do we develop communities, it's something that that, you know, we really got to dig in deep into. And, you know, I think, you know, some things may have worked that we think have worked and other things that, you know, I feel that there's a lot more opportunities to grow and develop those areas. And, you know, so, you know, I've been trying to dig more into CDVG, you know, allocations, how we allocate, you know, and and so forth. So I also realize that a lot of the plan that's being implemented currently was to, uh, is really fulfilling somewhat of a commitment set forth last year. And then, you know, in the next, I guess, few years, we'll be able to reevaluate that. But I think that, you know, again, when we're talking about how to develop our communities, you know, I'm, you know, I don't, I'm not opposed to what's proposed here. Really, I just, you know, with our study session on Measure M, I really appreciate the city's direction on that, on how we find alternative ways to support our communities. One thing that I did want to point out and send the attachments, and I was able to get some information on this. Um, one thing that I, I did wanna point out and send the attachments, um, and I was able to get some information on this. So one of those areas is actually, uh, something that came up, um, uh, several, for several months about assistance and ability to be homeowners. Um, so I appreciate the, the city managers, um, you know, a conversation about this earlier. And I was hoping that we can share a little bit more about specifically, um, the opportunity for homeownership assistance. Um, uh, can, is there someone available to kind of highlight, um, what that is about, uh, with respect to what's included in the amendments or attachments, excuse me?
Sure, council member. This is Andrew Bush. Uh, I'll ask Emily Cantor, Housing Services Director, to, to address, uh, that question.
Thank you.
Sure, yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Councilmember Silva, for the question. And it is kind of buried in that attachment, you're right, but there, um, the city of Vacaville was awarded. Uh, five hundred thousand dollars in response to an application to the state. For homeownership assistance funding, it's grant funding. And that as soon as the contracts are completed between the city and the state, we will be able to launch that program. And offer down payment assistance to, um, income eligible families to purchase their first home here in Vacaville. So once the funding is ready, we'll be doing, uh, you know, outreach and notices through social media and the newspaper. Uh, through our, our lender community, et cetera, to get the word out on the availability of those funds. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to share that information.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I, I have a couple of comments. Um, I, I think the plan i- is, is pretty good. Um, i- it, a five-year plan does sort of lock us in a little bit. Um, so I have a couple of suggestions and tweaks that I'd like to maybe toss out to, to my fellow council members and the staff. I know we've undergone a pretty significant process so far, but a couple of things that I, I've heard some of my fellow council members talk about a little bit. Uh, there, there've been some ongoing comments about sidewalk repairs specifically in lower-income neighborhoods. So what happens in the city of Vacaville, a lot of people don't know this, is that if, uh, a tree on your property, you're in a tree on the city's property, ruins your sidewalk. And it gets to a point that it's unsafe, the city will come around and city manager, please correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly. Will come around and basically like issue, uh, kind of a fix-it ticket of sorts. And if you don't fix it, they will eventually, I believe, charge you for the cost of fixing it. So the sidewalk in general is not owned by the city, it's owned by you. So when there's cracks or safety issues or whatnot, uh, you have to fix that. I know we've had quite a few instances recently where lower-income, especially seniors on fixed incomes and things of that sort, uh, are having these issues. And so they call the city kind of panic, what do I do? Concrete is not cheap, especially right now with, with the cost of, of building materials. I wanna know if we can carve out some, because some of this actually is in general, I'm, I'm not sure exactly which specific line item this year is. But it's improving public facilities and infrastructure. We always do the ADA curves with this stuff too. Could we carve out like a ten thousand dollar a year fund, uh, out of maybe the allocation, the sixty-five percent allocation? That would allow, uh, low-income residents or low-income seniors, even more importantly. The opportunity to essentially have their fees for this waived and have the concrete repaired. Maybe this already exists. I'm pretty sure it doesn't, because I've heard it brought up three or four times at council meetings. It really does feel to me like this is exactly the type of folks that we're trying to help. So question number one is, could we create a program that would subsidize or, uh, reduce the cost or maybe make it free for concrete repair? For low-income folks or seniors through this program. So that's question one. Uh, question two. I really feel like we need a systemic approach, and I think this actually kind of has that anyways. I was talking with council member Silva, uh, yesterday. And we were talking about, uh, some issues with the youth and not having the resources. And really, it's just this whole like encompassed thing where they need stuff to do and they need rec facilities and they need, there's housing issues, there's all these different things. And so one of my proposals, I think, for this particular plan is even though it's a million bucks, a million bucks does go pretty fast. I like the idea of focusing on a particular zone or neighborhood or district and really focusing on those zones or districts. That A, need the C D B G qualifications first and then are sort of lowest income, highest need. And then using this as sort of a leverage tool to really build kind of a greater project. So we've got a million through this, we could leverage a million through these other grants. We're chipping, you know, seven hundred fifty thousand through measure M and really focus every five years or so on a neighborhood in Vacaville that's super underserved. And there's a couple of them. There's, you know, there's some kind of in the Markham area, there's some in the Payden area, there's some kind of by Vacapenia. And, you know, in five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, all of these neighborhoods would get kind of their own kind of city version of a promised zone every five years. So I really like kind of a comprehensive targeted approach to a particular neighborhood. I think looking at the projects on this particular list, you sort of do that. I'm not sure if that was intentional or by accident. So you're already kind of doing that, but it makes this catalyst to kind of launch a larger program. Uh, there was a speaker on here today that, you know, uh, that made some comments about getting money directly to, to kids. And so I, uh, I have a question, Emily, for you. So it says fifteen percent is the max that we can actually send, uh, to public services. So doing the, the math in my head, we're only about halfway funding the, uh, Boys and Girls Club and eleven currently. Um, is, is that correct? Uh, Emily?
Vice Mayor Sullivan, thank you. Um, Anna Eaton with the Boys and Girls Club is, um, on the line and ready to ask, answer questions specific to her program.
But I think my question is more for you. So basically, the cap that we can spend of this funding for these programs is fifteen percent. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So based on the math, though, we're only spending about, uh, seven percent, eight percent, correct? Does that sound about ballpark?
Well, five thousand of the dollars do go to the eleven and then the balance of the fifteen percent does go to the Vacaville Boys and Girls Club.
Right, so, so eighty thousand out of a million sixty-two is like, I don't know, I'm doing the math roughly here, like eight percent, nine percent, right? Is that, is that an accurate statement? Is that fair, I guess?
Okay, thank you. I, sorry, it took me a minute to catch up with you. I apologize.
No worries.
The fifteen percent is based on, is only allowed to be based on the annual allocation. So only the five hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars that we are being allocated for this coming year.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're telling me something. Right, so are we, I guess my question to you, I'm sorry, because it's complicated little math in this year and that year. Are we giving the maximum percentage we can give to the nonprofits currently? Are we giving the full fifteen percent based on whatever cap we have or don't have? Is that, is that making sense?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, we are.
Okay, okay, thank you. So scratch that whole comment. Thank you. You've cleared that up. I appreciate it. Um, and again, I wish we could give a ton more. We probably should consider this for measuring when that discussion comes up, but I wanted to make sure that would, but you clarified that. Um, and then last question, and, and Emily, I, I don't know if this makes sense either. This is sort of a question for you. Ran into an issue, uh, and Aaron, this might be somewhere for later in the agenda, council comments or something as well. Ran into an issue over this last week where we had a neighbor in my district who, in, in deep distress, landlord. Tore apart their bathroom. They had no bathroom for twenty days. They were told to use another apartment that basically was being used. By like several other families, huge COVID issue. The landlord was non-responsive. It was housing that, that we subsidize and we should have some sort of vested interest in. The landlord, there's not a lot of teeth, there's not a lot we could do to the landlord to force them to kind of speed it up. But staff did go out there and rattle some cages and we actually got a toilet installed and got some other action, but there were still issues with mold and dust and. Actually, no mold, dust and smell and other stuff. The problem was, I called Emily and said, hey, do you have like a housing fund that we can use to house families and could we put her in a motel for five or six nights? It's ninety degrees outside, she can't use her bathroom, there's COVID. Do we have funding to do something like this? I recall probably over the last year, four or five other instances where an apartment complex, a low-income apartment complex burned and we had nowhere to send the families. We'd ask for donations. We had issues with the fires. We didn't have funding to, to send people to shelters, so we had to send them to the warming shelter. Could we build like a ten thousand dollar emergency fund out of C D B G? Or does it even make sense to have this discussion because C D B G is so restrictive? So that when these issues come up, we can call housing staff and you guys have tools at your disposal to help these folks. Would that make sense in this proposal, Emily, or should I save that for a later discussion on the budget?
Yeah, I think for the purposes of the C D B G funding, we would need to dig into the statutory requirements to see if that would be eligible. Because there are restrictions on, you know, location and, uh, income levels and. Various other things. So typically, we do check in with our head rep, um, also if we're gonna change our activities and they're very helpful in, uh, figuring that out.
Gotcha. So I'll make a, a question during public comments about this and that way it's not restricted just to C D B G. Um, so I guess my two primary comments then after you answer my questions, thank you very much. Is the first is, could we do some sort of sidewalk subsidy program for lower-income folks, especially lower-income seniors as part of this plan? And secondly, um, I really like the idea of a, of a zone, a target, a kind of a cohesive neighborhood group. Where we could use this funding pool to leverage other funding and really make a big impact in one part of town versus little impacts all over town. Uh, great presentation. Thank you for your time. That's all my comments.
Mr. Mayor, this is Aaron. Can I, uh, address the first comment?
Y- yes, please.
So, uh, with regards to the sidewalk, uh, repair issue, uh, our group has, uh, been working on that subject for a while now. Uh, we have actually temporarily, um, you know. Deferred that program, if you will, in terms of repairs and in, in preparation of putting together an action plan for the council's consideration to do. Something along those lines to, um, institute a new program. So we'll be bringing that back to council at a future date. Uh, right now, we are not, um, um. Pursuing any further action on that subject. So, um, when we bring a program back, we'll, we'll give that for your, for your consideration.
Thank you, City Manager.
Okay, I, um, I'm a huge advocate for the Boys and Girls Club. I know I saw Anna Eaton's, uh, name on our list. I don't know if she's available, but I would love for her to say a few comments about the Boys and Girls Club if she's available.
Thank you, Mayor. I am available and good evening to all council members. Um, I just wanted to share some information broadly to the community is, is why I wanted to speak tonight. We are preparing for her full day summer operations. And, uh, what happens there are fortified academic enrichment opportunities for the kids, career exploration. Uh, college exploration for our teenagers as well as job shadowing. So, so much happens in the summertime for our youth. The exciting thing is that, um, we will be accepting applications now for families to, uh, attend our summer program. Also, we're working with the school district on being able to expand our footprint during the summertime. Typically, we had just offered it at the Trower Center, uh, because school normally closes for the summer and then we're out. Um, but this year, because of the COVID situation, we're working with the school district on. Having a presence inside the schools and working with the children additionally after they're done with the summer school program. To have a further enrichment with us for the rest of the day. So I'm excited to share that as well and more information will be coming out. Um, but I did wanna thank the council, past council for approving the C D B G funds. I, I recognize that the Boys and Girls Club gets a good fair amount from that. I wish it were more. Because in the year of COVID, our operating budget was actually one point one million dollars. And we did meet that, um. Had it not been for the extra support from COVID funding, from corporations that stepped up, stepped up and then additional grants, uh, that were allowed to us. Just because of our unique situation of staying open. Uh, so I would like to work with the council on identifying additional income. Because, you know, COVID is going to be something that we overcome. And hopefully our, our fundraisers will get back online to help us. But again, we wouldn't have met our budget. We wouldn't have been able to. Uh, operate the full days and shift staff, you know, even though half of our facilities were closed. We, we were able to shift staff to the front end of the day and, and stay open and start as distance learning hubs. Um, so to help us recover, it would be amazing if, uh, the council would entertain and consider working with us on. Identifying additional funds to keep Trower going and to keep support services going for our youth. Uh, but really, I do wanna thank Emily and Daniel for, um, just being great partners, working with us from the housing department. And I just wanted to share what was happening for the summertime. So we appreciate the support from the city of Vacaville. Look forward to helping the kids end their school year this, this year and then of course, summer programs and hopefully normal operations in the fall. I'm happy to take questions if you have any questions.
Thank you, Anna. Councilmember Wiley.
Uh, I just wanted to weigh in and say thanks for all the support for families in need. And the money spent on preschool and after-school and Boys and Girls Clubs is money well spent. And just when looking at the money that we're spending, it looks great to help families and get those, any help with getting homes and things like that. So I wanted to say thank you for the work to get resources to families.
Thank you. Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, I wanted to thank Emily and staff for not only the time that they put into this, but also the thought, um, the, the thoughts that they put into making sure that this was meeting. Maximizing the efficiency, the money that we're being allocated. Um, so, so thank you for that. And I would like to motion that we approve.
Perfect. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Stockton.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Rowlett.
Hi. Thank you very much. We will move to item, uh, C for Clean Streets. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council. This item is at the request of, uh, City Council at your last meeting. To put on a consideration for, um, doing a one-time budget adjustment for our budget, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. To work with the Clean Streets program. Hammer Colden is our Housing Services Administrator is here to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Rowlett, uh, Vice Mayor Sullivan and council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Alright, great. Thank you. Tonight, uh, staff is bringing before you an item to consider funding, uh, the continuation of the Vacaville Clean Street program. Next slide, please. The Vacaville Clean Streets, uh, is a pilot program that was launched on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. The program developed by volunteers that participate in the Vacaville Homeless Roundtable. Was designed with the goal to create work opportunities for unhoused residents of Vacaville. Next slide, please. Participants in the program must be Vacaville residents. And must be referred to the program by the Vacaville Police Department Community Response Unit or Crew. Or the Vacaville Solano Services Corporation. Currently, the teams clean litter and debris in the downtown area on Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. Participants not only benefit from work opportunity and employment mentoring while in the program. But also receive referrals and connections to beneficial social services. Next slide, please. On April twenty-seventh, council directed staff to work with program volunteers on a plan to extend the program through summer of this year. To date, the program has, uh, two trained volunteer supervisors that lead the Clean Street teams. And the program has had thirteen unhoused residents participate with a total, uh, in total. With a consistent crew of four participants and one supervisor each workday. Each participant and supervisor receives gift cards before the work completed. The amount of gift card value, uh, gift card value earned can vary with an average daily cost of two hundred and twenty-five dollars per day. And currently, four hundred and fifty dollars per week. Next slide, please. Private donations have supported the cost of the program through April twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-one. However, those have now been depleted. To continue the program through the summer, it has been requested that the city of Vacaville consider providing additional funding. Vacaville Solano Services Corporation, um, the local nonprofit homeless provider and opportunity house operator would be the entity. That would enter into contract with the city. And with this funding, the program would be able to add cleanup route. Move from Tuesdays and Thursdays to Monday, Wednesday and Friday, so add an additional day of work. And offer participants the opportunity to advance within the program. Next slide, please. Assuming a cost of six hundred and seventy-five dollars a week, if council approved funding of ten thousand dollars tonight. The program could be extended through August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Council could also consider approving an amount less than ten thousand dollars to extend the program or consider other funding options. Next slide, please. Tonight, staff would recommend approving funding not to exceed ten thousand dollars to continue the program. Authorize the Housing Services Department Director to enter into an appropriate contract to implement, uh, the approved action. And authorize a one-time expenditure budget augmentation for the program or as an alternative action. Who's not to allocate the funding to continue the program. Uh, and this would, uh, address the strategic plan goal three to protect Vacaville's quality of life. address the strategic plan Goal 4 to protect Vacaville's quality of life. Next slide, please. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Silva?
Hi, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. You know, I definitely value work and I like the concept of this because it's something that we show where we value those efforts. And, you know, I remember the first time I was finally offered a legit job. You know, it felt good and something I never turned away from. One question I have regarding the downtown, so we're talking about quote unquote picking up trash. Is it is it exclusive to that? Or something else I've noticed downtown, this weird area between buildings and public access to where there's, you know, a lot of weeds that are built up. Could that be something that could be worked into this as well?
This is Emily Cantu, the Housing Services Director. And at this time, the program is picking up trash and litter. We could certainly explore that option. We need to look into, you know, the ability to have the tools available, et cetera. But we can certainly explore that.
It may be something that explorations maybe like to maybe suggest just reaching out to the BID downtown and seeing what what minor things maybe there can be collaboration with to help assist in, you know, keeping downtown you know, nice with respect to what's in scope project. Thank you.
Thank you for those suggestions, yes.
I'm going to open up public comment.
Caller ending in 724, I'll open your mic.
Hello, Roberto Valdez, longtime Vacaville resident. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but I have to be very clear on this. And I want to make a point on this. With the previous discussion you had about the community block, I wanted to put out statement in regard to the website that I
Sir, we're on the next item. Next caller, please.
Caller ending in 965, I'll open your mic. Caller ending in 965, go ahead and press star six to open your mic.
Why don't we jump to the next caller?
Brooke Fox, I'll open your mic.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling in support of this program. I did want to make one clarification, though. This is actually a citywide program. I've been sitting on this committee with all the hardworking folks that have put this program together and really bootstrapped it, honestly, from nothing. So I admire all the work that they're doing. But I do want to reiterate, it is currently citywide. It's not just a downtown program. But I am fully in support of this type of effort. And thank you very much for your support tonight.
Next caller.
Caller ending in 724. I will open your mic. Caller ending in 724, if you wish to speak on nine C, the Clean Streets Program, please press star six on you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, are you going to be talking about the Clean Streets?
Mr. Mayor, let me be very clear with you, okay? And I respect you.
No, no, I'm going to ask the question. I'm going to
I am aware you need to let me
Okay, I'm going to cancel public comments or close public comments. I will go back to the panelists. And I have looks like I have Raleigh Galligan.
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, Councilman Mayor, thanks for considering this. In my opinion, the local street cleanup project has benefited the city by beautifying the streets, the alleyways and the parking lots. As you heard, four to five volunteers twice a week, Tuesday and Thursday, have picked up about four to five 40 gallon trash bags a day for two and a half months. We've had mostly middle-aged volunteers and we're hoping to reach out to some millennials. And it's benefited our houseless persons. We built deeper relationships so they trust us to assist them with their next steps off the streets. They meet with crew and the caseworker at McDonald's each of those mornings at nine o'clock when we have an aide. We've had one apply for a stimulus check so they can get a down payment to a house and get their driver's license to get a job. We've had one that is working now applying for Veterans Housing on Rocky Hill. We've had one fill out a resume for a job application and get ready for a job interview. We meet with them twice a week, so it really helps. You know, we've arranged interviews for rehab programs. And they've built a reliable routine of showing up for work and doing the job. And they have a sense of pride. They earn a stipend of gift cards and but they're aware when their peers begin to litter and they don't like it. So I think that's a good thing. And I want to say thank you for the support for these two and a half months from Emily Cantu, the Housing Director, Brian McLean, Public Work Director, Colleen Bruman, O-House Director, Sergeant Katie Cardona, Crew Director, the private donor that funded the month of March, Danny Wells who funded the month of April, and Vice Mayor Sullivan who helped us get across the line in May. And I want to say thank you to Shannon Evans who has recruited the volunteers. She's our supervisor. She shuttles them. She works alongside of them. She does all the management, record keeping, planning routes, providing tools and supplies. And ever since Shannon got off the streets in our sheltering program in 2016, she's been giving back and not even, she didn't even stop after her terrible injury that was incurred while working for Caltrans as one of the victims of the back-to-back horrific accidents under city aid. So I want to say thanks for considering.
Thank you. I do see Colleen Bruman's hand up. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I just want to say VSSC, Vacaville Solano Services Corporation, is very excited about this program. What we've really seen is a lot of the, I want to ditto a lot of the stuff that Raleigh just said. But I've really seen in working with these individuals, a sense of pride. They feel good about themselves, about being able to give back to their community. And that is why we're seeing them want to make a change in what they're doing. I also feel in doing three days a week versus the two, we're going to get more people involved because on a regular basis, because we need, they need that consistency to keep moving forward. And it teaches them responsibility for showing up and and those things that they learn from doing this type of volunteer almost work is what they're going to need for working a real job. And so we're just seeing dividends already. And I also want to thank the Brooke Fox and the DVBID for being a part of our panel and putting this all together so that we can make a difference. And I hope that you will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Council, excuse me, Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. First, I just wanted to say this is an example of how you address homeless issues in a local community, right? So you have city staff working alongside faith-based volunteers, volunteers from nonprofits. You have the police department's crew unit making sure all of the applicants are screened and they're safe to work in Vacaville and they're from Vacaville. You have local businesses in the bid supporting this effort with donations and community input. So it really is the the community totally giving a hand up, not a handout. And so, you know, like Colleen mentioned, one of the hardest parts about homeless services, one of the things that people often don't understand when you don't work in this field, is it is incredibly difficult to go, you know, as I say, from under the bridge to employ. It's really hard when you have mental health issues, when you've got substance abuse problems, you've been living outside for three or four years, to all of a sudden, just tomorrow, have the self-esteem, the confidence, the ability, the clean clothes, the know-how, the whatever to apply for a job and then actually go to work. And so these bridge programs actually give people dignity, they give them self-esteem, they help them dip their toe back in the employment pond. And so I'm very supportive of this program. I love the homegrown nature of it. And ultimately, our goal is to hopefully bring a full-on downtown streets program to Vacaville. But for now, this is an amazing pilot. We're helping, you know, six or so folks out a week, you know, different participants, and we're moving hundreds and hundreds of bags of trash from Vacaville in the process. So, you know, you're helping the homeless, you're helping clean up town and you're providing a community service. The second thing I wanted to mention was that a couple of my council, one of them, one of my council member peers and I had a really good conversation today. And I really appreciate this particular council member reaching out. There were some concerns. There were some concerns about us just kind of dumping money into this and I'll be back in six months asking for 10,000 more and, you know, where does this stop? And so I think this particular council member made the comment, you know, we need a plan, you know, that we can't just throw money at this. It's, you know, it's a never-ending problem. And so I really, really agree with that. And I want to express to my council member peers, we do need a plan. We don't have city staff that are assigned to work on a homelessness plan. The Homeless Roundtable has essentially been disbanded and hasn't met in over a year. And we need a plan. And so what I would propose at some point in time, we have a discussion about directing the staff to stand up the Homeless Roundtable again. And then we direct the roundtable with any of the council members that want to join to come up with two things. The first is the scope. What does homelessness look like in Vacaville? How many homeless are they? How many are addicted to drugs? How many have mental health issues? How old are they? What resources are there? What options do they currently have? We don't even have a reliable number. Some people say it's 50. Some people say it's 75. Some say it's 100. We need a reliable scope and starting point. And the second thing I'd like that group to do is to come up with solutions or options for council and the county to pursue. So they come up with different plans, you know. So here's the scope that we agree on. Here's options A, B, and C to address homelessness in Vacaville. We don't have anyone working on it. We need to do it. It's overdue. And so I don't know if it's appropriate to bring it up in this motion or later date, but we need to have the Homeless Roundtable stood back up. Whatever council members want to join can join. And we start talking about, you know, the scope and we start talking about possible solutions. On top of that, we incorporate our discussions with the county two by two into the process. The county is at the table. We've had two meetings. It's Councilmember Stockton and myself talking about sharing resources. You know, homelessness is one of those problems. It's no one's problem. It's everyone's problem at the same time. So I really am, and this is the first step. This buys this group some time. This gets them probably through August, maybe even September. They can apply for grants in the meantime, or they can kind of wait and see what the city figures out in terms of solutions. So I really hope my peers on council tonight will approve this. I think there might be some slides that we can share with pictures, which are pretty cool. I don't know if Emily can share those or not, or Crystal, or there we go. Again, these are your community members cleaning up your streets. We've got Peabody Road right there. We have the parking lot behind Merchant and Main. We have, I mean, this is it's all over town. And so like we mentioned, it's not just downtown. We have a crew of folks going through Vacaville, providing labor and cleaning up our streets. And in the meantime, getting job skills, getting self-esteem and getting benefits. Can we show the routes really quick? I think it's the last two slides. There we go. So here's the routes too. So this is the actual routes that we, that the group's done so far. And then you could actually, if you go to the next slide, it actually zooms into downtown. So again, it's not just downtown. They're cleaning a wide swath of town. And so if we increase this to three days, we can do more routes, more, you know, more garbage bags. It's just a really cool service where the local community is helping the community. So I will leave it at that. I hope council considers the full 10K. I'm really excited about this program and I couldn't be more appreciative of Pastor Raleigh Goggan, of Colleen Bruman, of Danny Wells, of the bid staff, and especially Katie Cardona from Crew and the Police Department for helping with this whole project. It's been a really unique experience. I really appreciate their participation. Thank you. That's all my comments.
Councilmember Roberts?
Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate programs like this. I'm a firm believer in helping those that actually want to help and move themselves up in life. Programs like this that help give people a sense of purpose and still those work habits again to get prepared to move on to more regular work and get into hopefully housing. And so, yeah, I just want to say I appreciate stuff like this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Stockton?
Thank you. First off, I like the concept of folks working to get to get something and developing those skills. I guess my, and I guess this gets us through to August. My question, I have a couple of questions. You know, how long does this go? It looks like it's being funded through our general fund. I would really like to see this be funded through community efforts, through private funds. And I would like to see the money spent on this for these gift cards to go to local businesses, you know, that are still hurting from COVID as well. So so my question is, is there a plan with this that will look into, you know, trying to privately fund this so that it's not coming out of the the general fund? And as well as can staff look at, I'm on the homeless two by two with the with the vice mayor, look at some alternative funding that we might be able to find to be able to continue a program like this without it coming out of our general fund?
So this is Emily Cantu, the Housing Services Director. And you have the request before you this evening is a general fund request of up to $10,000 towards this program. From March 16 until now, the program has been run by private donations that were solicited by the volunteers that created the program. I, once these funds tonight are depleted, I haven't pursued the plan going forward with Vacaville Solano Services Corporation or the team yet. But that's certainly something we can do. And we do always have our eyes out for, you know, any grants that are out there, funding sources that are available. And we could have our grant contractor have her eyes out as well to help us look for other alternate sources.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wiley?
I agree that this is a great program for starting and the money that we spend helps people move along. And I will make a motion to approve this expenditure up to 10,000 through August or however long it takes to spend the 10,000.
Perfect. Thank you for the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second this, Sullivan.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Mayor Rowlett?
Item 9D, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council. This is a resolution approving an agreement for consulting services between the city and Nicole Anderson and Associates. Don Littredini, our Assistant City Manager, and Nicole Anderson will be making a presentation for your consideration now.
Thank you, Aaron. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're requesting approval to enter into agreement with Nicole Anderson and Associates for Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Training and Facilitation Services. We do have Nicole on the phone with us tonight, so I will start the presentation and then turn it over to her for a bit. And then we'll be able to answer any questions you may have at the end of the presentation. Next slide. In 2020, the city faced unprecedented times, in particular COVID-19 pandemic, social unrest events, and environmental factors like the LNU complex fire. Unfortunately, 2021 continues to be challenging as we figure out what the new normal is and how we navigate through these changing times so that we can be specific and purposeful as we reconnect with the organization and community we serve. The efforts I will be talking about tonight are included in the citywide strategic plan adopted by council on February 23 of this year. Next slide. Goal four of the strategic plan is to maintain effective and efficient services. This includes an initiative to build a positive organizational culture and workforce. And one of the strategies we've identified is cultivating a progressive work culture that is responsive to customer service demands. Next slide. Goal five is a newly established goal by council to promote community engagement and increase equity and inclusion. As you can see, the strategies include a community engagement plan, a communications plan, a neighborhood capacity building strategy, and continuation of the Equity Focus Group effort. While the city manager's office is taking the lead on these initiatives, it will require high-level expertise on how to proceed effectively. As an example, the Equity Focus Group was a grassroots effort established to address equity and diversity concerns within the community. As the group was meeting, it became evident that the group would need a facilitator with a higher level of expertise in equity and diversity. This level of expertise is critical as we learn how to close the gap between our community, city leaders and city workforce. This level of expertise is critical as we learn how to close the gap between our community, city leaders and city workforce. Next slide, please. As we began researching options, Nicole Anderson and Associates was identified as a consultant with 20 plus years experience developing and facilitating racial equity work. She is a longtime Solano County resident, so she's familiar with the challenges we face locally. She's worked with a variety of public agencies, including city councils, commissions, school districts and police departments. Next slide, please. Nicole has proposed a comprehensive plan for the city that will include training and coaching for city staff, city leaders and police department personnel, as well as facilitation of study sessions with the city council, the Equity Focus Group, the three by three committee between the city and the school district, as well as facilitation of community forums to assist the city with in community engagement effort. The efforts she proposed are specific and purposeful. Our intent in working with Nicole and her associates is to challenge our ways of thinking and to learn how we can work together to embrace change in all aspects of our service delivery, both internally and externally. Next slide. Nicole will cover the equity, diversity and inclusion work she's proposing, often referred to as EDI. And she will discuss the definition of EDI and the systems change approach her firm uses. Next slide. So with that, I will turn it over to Nicole.
Thank you, Don. Uh, good evening, uh, City Council Members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you for having me tonight. Um, really honored to, um, be able to address, um, some of the, uh, services that we provide to our clients, our team. I have an amazing group of teammates who I get to lock arms with in this work. And, uh, before I share a little bit of that, I want to speak a little bit more about, um, just being a Solano County resident and also being someone who, um, is a fan of your city, uh, a fan of your school district, um, and also as a former educator, um, in Solano County, in particular Vallejo Unified School District. Um, I've had the distinct pleasure of, um, living in this space and admiring, um, enjoying, um, the city of Vacaville. And so I have a, a deep kind of passion, um, to support this work, um, beyond just the professional space. And I want to share that because I believe that it is important to acknowledge the work that you've done in your city. Um, I want to acknowledge, um, the hardships that Don shared earlier about what the city has gone through, but also the great potential of the city, which is something that, uh, I know my family and I have, have often considered, you know, hey, let's go move to Vacaville. But recognize that our support system, grandparents are still here in Vallejo, and also we're honored to, uh, live right down the street from a high school called Jesse Bethel High School, which happens to be named after my very own grandfather, um, who was an advocate, um, across the state, um, not only in the city of Vallejo, but across the state, um, in many aspects. And so, um, and the next slide, I want to jump into a little bit of our approach to the work and would love to hear your questions about the work. So if we can go to the next slide, please. Um, we talk often about, um, EDI work, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion work, um, as, um, a way of really kind of reimagining how we, um, educate our kids, how we serve our, uh, community members, how we really provide services and create a culture that is inclusive, that is honoring and valuing diversity, but also, um, provides equitable outcomes. And one of the things that we talk about is using a systems approach. And so if you all are interested in doing a little research about the Water of System Change, it's an article we share with every client to really approach this work in a way that helps us reimagine how we serve. Um, you are all servants and I know you all became, became council members because you want to serve people and you serve your community. And one of the things that's interesting is we all have been in our respective spaces for a really long time. And so in this article, it really talks about the approach to complex issues. And you all, I know, are addressing a lot of complex issues. I've been listening to your, uh, council meeting tonight and all the different complexities of homelessness and housing and all the different, um, kind of crises that people are in. These are complex. They're often bigger than us. But one of the things that's interesting about our approach is that, um, a lot of our framework comes from this article. And there's this story about these fish, um, that are swimming, um, in this, I call it big body of water. And when we talk about the work of serving, um, in a city like Vacaville, in any space where you have lots of different institutions that exist in the city, um, there are conditions that exist. And as you think about this analogy and this story about this fish swimming along and one fish comes up and asks the other fish, hey, how's the water? And that second fish looks back blankly and says, what's water? A lot of the work that is done around equity and diversity and inclusion work requires us to answer this question like, well, what's water? Like what are these conditions that exist in our city that we may not be aware of? Or we've been swimming in the water so long, we just may have not recognized that some conditions in our city may not be as healthy for some fish that they are for others. And so our approach to this is always looking at it from a learning space, right? That we're always open to learning more because we may not actually understand all the conditions that exist. So this is where our services really help to explore that. And so next slide, please. Um, we, we talk about kind of the work, right? And so how do we explore like, what's water, right? Like, what is this work about? And so I often look at it from a lens of understanding why the work is happening. So Don did an amazing job of just reminding you of some of the reasons why you're doing this work, some of the political unrest and social unrest and all the crises that happen, these pandemic going on, COVID, you have racism, you have all these different versions of crises. So the why of the work is that we have a moral imperative, right? There are people who are hurting, who aren't served as well as other people. But also what we have is data, right? We actually have data that shows that there are some gaps. And this is something we have to be aware of. Um, some of that data is quantitative in nature where you all have housing data. You have data around employment, around crime, but do we have the qualitative data, which is more about people's experiences? And so the why of the work is ensuring that there is an equity, um, equitable outcome for all of our community members. Um, but often the how of the work is the messy part, I call it. And so when we talk about the how of the work, we talk about using a systems approach. Often, uh, we use professional learning to do that, to create awareness, to create community engagement is very important to bring people together to talk about our differences, but also to really unpack what are the needs? Because they are very different for each individual. They're not, everyone's not monolithic. So we have to engage with the community to really learn. And of course, your, your how of your work includes some of your, uh, important partners. Um, we talk about the school district. I heard earlier, there's a partnership with the school district about your summer programs, understanding that our youth are so important when we talk about the health of our community. How do we have a thriving community? And that how of the work can be very messy. And so we often talk about our approach to this work. Um, and I'll share in a little bit the systems approach and also in a way that's safe and at the pace of readiness for our community, because every community is different. And so the what of the work is, is really the outcomes, right? What is this all this going to mean, Nicole? What, what does this look like when it's said and done? Well, the goal really is that you have a plan, right? It's one thing to be aware of, of what the conditions are. It's another to have a plan to address it. And so the what of your work is really about having a plan and ultimately the long-term, um, what of the work and the result is, how do you close those equity, diversity and inclusion gaps? Okay. So at the next slide, I want you to kind of get a sense of our approach before I tell you a little bit more about equity, diverse and inclusion. So one of the things that's very important in our work as a firm is that, um, we are very adamant about ensuring that this space is safe for people to engage. As you all have experienced over this last year, just like all of us, is that we've seen not only social unrest for a variety of reasons, but we've saw, we've seen, um, issues around conflict around race. We've seen issues around conflicts around, um, literally gender, gender identity, you name it. We've had a lot of different spaces where it's, it's been unsafe for people. And we've had people be accused of, of being a racist. We've had people accused of being, um, someone who's, um, you know, just not willing to change. And that kind of dialogue doesn't work well. Um, and so when we talk about safety for our firm, we talk about the fact that every single person who engages in your community has a place in this work. Now, the reality is everyone's in a different place on their journey. And that's okay. But ultimately about, you know, we want to have a space that is safe, but know that we're going to move to what we call brave space, which means that we're going to have to make some changes. And change is not easy for people. And so we have to be mindful of that, that while we want to create safe space to have this dialogue and really engage in the work, we also have to know it's going to be uncomfortable. And the discomfort of this work is where we often use these four agreements that are inspired by a gentleman who's done work for the last 30 years around. He calls it courageous conversations about race. We, we don't necessarily enter our work around race. We enter our work around equity, diversity, inclusion, because although race is a component of that, it is not the only component. So we like to use the agreements that he shared to really help people really lean into this work. And this is an important piece of it. I want to share upfront because equity and diversity work is not easy. And so we talk about going slow to go fast and we talk about ensuring that it is safe for everybody to engage. So I want to, um, just give you that little overview about our approach to the work. It's very important. I think we've been very successful because of this approach and making sure we meet people where they are on this journey. Next slide, please. So what does equity, diverse and inclusion mean? I think we've all heard of this, these terms, um, but just to kind of give you like examples. Um, and I'm going to give you, um, on the screen, you see more of an internal example. Um, when we talk about your internal work of working within city, uh, the city hall and working with staff. So this is an internal example. And then of course, there are some external examples I can give as well. But here you see equity. Equity is more about ensuring equally high outcomes. Um, we call it removing the predictability of success or failure that sometimes correlate with any social, cultural, racial factor. So this is where we talk about the data, right? The data shows that certain people are not always as, um, have those equal, um, outcomes that others have. And you see a predictability and you see a trend data over years and years and years of the same groups of people. And so we have to talk about like, how do we create equally high outcomes? That's what equity is, is an outcome. And so you see an example here. Sometimes we talk about pay structures, right, within an organization. So that's one way to look at it. Um, diversity, what does that mean? Well, sometimes people think of diversity as just a fancy word for differences, right? It's where differences exist, a wide range of identities. And we talk about that as a good thing, right? Sometimes that becomes awkward, but this is a good thing. So you have in Vacaville, a diverse group of people. And understanding what that means is really looking internally as, how does that look when we talk about like representation on our staff? So some people will say, we want to diversify our staff. So this is an example of what organizations look at when we talk about diversity. It is representation, um, of a diverse group of people. And sometimes it's ethnic and racial, and sometimes it's more about our experiences, right? It may be based on gender, maybe based on language, you name it. So diversity is differences. And then inclusion. Okay, inclusion is more about the process. Okay, it's more about making sure that you have an action that puts together, uh, an environment that is, um, respectful, um, that is full of different perspectives. So it's not enough to just have a diverse group of people in the space, but are those groups of people actually part of a decision-making process? Are they part of that action? And that's what you call inclusion. And so when you look at these three together, you notice they kind of marry together pretty well, but they are distinctly three different things. So this is what we work through with some of our training around all the aspects of what equity is, what is diversity, what's inclusion? Okay. And so, um, if you go to the next slide, what I want to share is more of an image, right? And so often use this with all of our clients to give a better sense of what this work is about. And so the image you see on the left is more about the differences, right? Equity and equality. Like some people may look at these very different when you watch these kids look at the baseball game and they're looking over this fence and the fence is like a barrier. And so as you look at these four quadrants here at this baseball game, you see equity and equality are very different. So as a city, we'll talk about like, how do you really wrestle with allocating resources equitably versus equally? Cause you can see equal doesn't work well for all because everyone may have different needs. So equity is about allocating resources to those that need it the most. And so this is where it's important to recognize these terms, because here's what happens is we have to get to a place of understanding that the reality in Vacaville is that you do have, um, groups of, of, of community members who are not getting what they need. So we have to really think about how do we really shift the allocation of resources to make sure our community has what they need. And we want to get away from reality. And that reality could be in very different nuances when you look at your data. Now, here's what I want you to think about, as I call it, the promised land, is ultimately we want to get to liberation, right? Equity, diversity, inclusion, those are like ways to get to literally liberation is let's just knock the barrier down. And then that's easier said than done, but I tell you, there's many barriers that actually can be knocked down once we start to talk about them and are aware of what they are. And so the last piece is you see the image on the right. And the image on the right is, is actually, um, it's an image that's inspired by a parable that then was evolved into a poem. And a lot of the work that, that you'll do this year and beyond is really going to be similar to this poem called the Elephant and the Blind Men. And these blind men are all feeling on this elephant and they're literally arguing, debating about what the elephant is, and none of them say it's an elephant. Right? They all say it's something different, a different body part. One's holding on to the tail. He says it's a rope. One's holding on to the ear. He says it's a fan. And literally they're all arguing and debating because they all have their different perspectives and they're all wrong, but then they're all right because they all have different perspectives. And so one of the things you'll find in your beautiful city of Vacaville is that there's going to be an elephant and blind man process going on for a while. Because everyone's going to come to this with a different space of seeing the elephant as something that may not be the same as someone else. Some may see this work as, you know, Vacaville is going to be addressing race and racism. And they're right. Some will say, you know what? I think we should really talk about language, right? Because we have a population of people who don't necessarily speak. Um, they come with beautiful languages other than English. So how are we going to talk about really bridging the barriers around language, right? And some may say, this is about our families and our students and our kids and our community who have special needs. Where we have to rethink that. And they're going to be right. So there's going to be a lot of needs that exist. And so we have to get to a place of common language. And that's the work that you really, um, have to think about is how do we really get to a place of all understanding? Equity is like a big umbrella or a big elephant here, and there's lots of different parts to it. That's the work that's going to happen with this type of work. So our goal is to really set you up with a foundation and a structure to really address the needs of your community through the lens of equity, diverse and inclusion. So next slide, please. So I want to end with this. I shared earlier in the beginning that we have a systems approach. And I want to just reiterate that, that that's very important, that when we talk about change, making change in a complex system and lasting change, it's important to have a systems approach. I don't know the approach that's been used in the past, but I can say in many organizations, in many institutions, a lot of times we just focus on policy and we focus on changing practice. And what we're going to have to think about is really getting beyond just the structure and look at, okay, now that the city council has amazing things you've approved, even tonight, you know, supporting homeless, um, homelessness, um, supporting, um, your street repair, your cleaning and your student, your, uh, kids during the summer programs. All of these things are going to require you to allocate those resources and make sure there's practices in place to support those groups that have that need. But what I worry about is if we don't look at the bigger picture of what we see kind of below that structural space on the left side is if we don't talk about the people in the system, making sure that the mindsets are there, the people buy into this, they understand they're a part of it. We empower people and also that there's some great relationships that are established to sustain the work. That's a systems approach, which is so critical to addressing your complex needs in your community. And so we really look forward to a potential partnership. Um, we currently partner with the school district, which has been amazing. Um, and we really look to bridge the gap, um, and create a space that, um, really supports, um, building capacity of your city, um, leadership and your staff and all of your partners together to really have an equity, diverse and inclusion lens and to really create a thriving community that lasts. Um, because I know you all are proud of your city, but I know that you all sort of here, um, and that you very much are passionate about making sure that you address the, the deep needs that exist right now. So thank you so much for the opportunity, um, to present. I definitely want to answer any questions that you may have as a council. And I just want to say, you know, stay encouraged on the journey, um, to just whatever decision you make tonight. I definitely want you to stay encouraged on the journey because there's a lot of work to be done. But I think the right people are in the right place to do this, um, at this point. So thank you very much. I'll pause and see if there's any questions.
Oh. Sorry, Mayor. I apologize.
Go ahead.
Apologies.
No, it's fine. It's Don.
Yeah, sorry. I was supposed to pass a virtual mic to Don. Apologies, Don.
That's okay. No problem. If we can go to the next slide, please. A few more things and then we'll wrap up here. Um, so kind of the next steps and timelines, um, and thank you, Nicole. I appreciate, uh, the information that you shared. Um, as for the next steps, uh, the contract will begin June 1st and cover a 12 month period. Um, staff will work with Nicole to develop the work plans for the various components mentioned. And along the way, staff will provide regular updates to council as part of the strategic plan. Next slide. As for the fiscal impact, the contract is not to exceed $62,000. And there are funds in the city manager's budget to cover the amount needed for June of approximately $5,167. The remaining balance will be included as part of the upcoming budget process for fiscal year 21, 22. Next slide. So by simple motion, the recommendation is for council to adopt the subject resolution approving the contract. And that concludes our presentation and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I do appreciate it. I will open it up to public comment. I see a couple of hands up.
Caller ending in seven, two, four. I'll open your mic.
Mr. Mayor and.
Mr. Valdez. Okay, listen. We're only going to discuss the item that we have upon us right now. But not going to. Anything else?
I'm fully aware of that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so you want to discuss this item?
If you let me talk.
Okay.
But you haven't done.
Okay, well.
If you let me talk.
If you're going to discuss this item, sir, I will let you.
Excuse me, excuse me. I am fully aware what you're discussing, sir. Okay, and I respect you. So please allow me to speak. Anyway, I want to say I'm elated that your, the city council is considering that having this project. We need it in Vacaville and it starts and ends at the city council. You have a tremendous impact on what happens in this community. I am very saddened to hear many of our citizens complain. About the inequities, a racial inequities that they're experiencing in this city. That is not to be tolerated, not to be dismissed, and you need to listen to the public, whether you like it or not, sir. All of you, not just you. And you were elected to do a job, let's have a better community by doing your part. And what you're doing is great. But I think you have a long way to go and you need to seriously think about what you're doing. And I wish you the best. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Edward Russell. I'll open your mic.
So two things fundamentally wrong. This equity, diversity and inclusion is way off base. Cannot have diversity without inclusion. Let that sink in, people. The other part that's fundamentally wrong from the beginning, so this is doomed to fail, is that you clump in again. When when it's something with black folks, we get clumped in with other crap. So they started off with saying, oh, yeah, this past year, we've seen social justice problems. That's not just past. It's been going on forever. But they go on to say, oh, like COVID and fires. Newsflash, white America, black folks did not start COVID. Black folks did not start the fires in Vacaville. Oh, my God, you guys are frustrating. If it's going to be social justice for black folks and keep that bad, go try to group us with other folks. Um, I don't understand paying someone like 60 racks to tell another person how they should feel about me. I can tell you. So I can save you some money. Stop being a racist. Look how easy that is. Stop supporting terrorist organizations. Stop ignoring our concerns. Stop using terms like, oh, I have black family members. You know, this is good, sounds great, great story to be told. However, I applied for parts of recreations and gone. Um, I asked to create a police oversight committee. Nope. He asked for the court program. Nope. Uh, this has nothing to do with training. Racist have hate in their hearts. You can't fix that. You can't educate stupid. If you hate someone, you hate someone. They can go through 15,000 diversity trainings. They don't care. It's not going to affect them. I don't even understand why we're going through this. 60 racks. Give me 60 racks. I promise you, I'll fix your race problem. But so before I go, because I know my time is almost up. I know you guys do like this two by two where you get city council, working with school board or supervisors. Let's go two by two this way. Let's put two white Americans with two black guys. So I don't know if my opponent is up with this, but I'm moving apart with him. I mean, you give us two of your white guys, or I don't know, Ron and Ron. We can probably fix all of these problems in a matter of three hours. We can split 60 racks up between us all and have a great evening. But again, I think this is a waste of time because at the end of the day, can't fix hate. That's in people's heart. No amount of training is going to fix that. Real conversations start with having real conversation. Oh, you, you're a bigot. Okay, bet. Now what? Let's fix it. This is wasting 60 racks. That's my personal opinion. Hope that doesn't come out of my paycheck. Have a great evening.
Next caller.
Revontee Robinson. I'll open your mic.
Oh, my God, that is hella funny how that happened. Um, so I'm I'm gonna start off by saying that I that I love Edward Russell's idea. Um, I also want to say that I appreciate the consulting group and I do appreciate their efforts. I'm actually really happy to see that as well. Um, I had a question about slide five. I wanted to know who the focus, the equity focus group was. Um, and I also wanted to say that, in my opinion, staff shouldn't have to be taught. Uh, they should already be this way or they don't really belong in their positions, especially police. Um, I don't think that this training is going to change Ron or 3% Butterbean. And, um, I mean, you know, honestly, at this point, we need to cancel Ron Rolet. Uh, because the way that he's been shutting off public comments and the way he's been disrespecting Roberto is not cool. So, you know, I mean, next time that you're at an event, maybe I should shut down your public comment.
Next caller, please.
Danielle Shay. I'll open your mic. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
So I want to thank Nicole for her presentation and I want to express admiration for her and the other members of her firm for doing this work. Um, I have a question for Nicole and her colleagues and about. What type of changes are typically made to city policy after people having worked with your firm, either school districts or cities? Um, what are our actual outcomes? Vacaville isn't short on training. Um, the Vacaville Police Department isn't short on diversity training. They're not short on. Training on how to work with disabled individuals and it doesn't seem to me that this is a training issue. So I'm wondering, uh, what are some typical outcomes after cities or other entities working with your firm? Um, and then my other question is for city employees, maybe this is for Aaron, Ron. Um, whoever it needs to be for, what level of commitment is the city pledging tonight if this is adopted? Do you paid more than this for reports before with little actually actual policy implementation to show for it? Um, it's often just been a box to check. What commitment are you making tonight if you vote for this and and this happens? What will, what will be the outcome? What will change? Because training is one thing, but I mean, what, will there be employment policies that change? Um, will there be policy within the police department that changes? Will there be city statutes that change? I want to know what the actual outcomes are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will, uh, I do want to get some answers for Danielle, but we'll go to the next caller and then I'll ask for some answers.
Jennifer Piazza. I'll open your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Awesome. Um, so I just wanted to reiterate some concerns. Some of the previous callers have said that. Um, and this is in no way a reflection of the consulting firm, which I think is fantastic. I was looking at. Uh, up the firm while you guys were talking and, you know, great group of people, it looks like. Um, but. Training is again, not the issue. And these hard conversations do have to happen, but if you're not committed to making changes as a result of the conversations that happen. Then nothing is going to change. And I really wanted to reflect a little bit on one of the slides. There was the upside down pyramid. And just, you know, it it's so incredibly important. That we not just talk about training, but that we talk about implicit bias, which really is just a pretty code word for racism. Ableism, all of the isms that people don't like to talk about because it calls them out and makes them uncomfortable. You guys need to commit and you're going to be uncomfortable doing it. But. You have to hold yourselves accountable because the people of Vacaville are telling you that this is an issue. This has been an ongoing issue. For a very long time and it's not going to change until either people's attitudes change. Which I don't know how possible that's going to be, or the people who are in charge change. And just remember that you are accountable to voters. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close public comment. I will give Nicole the opportunity to answer Danielle's questions. Nicole, did you, did you have the opportunity to write them down?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I just appreciate all the public comments, by the way, and and just really honoring in your community and all the diverse perspectives. And so to speak to Danielle's comment or question, I should say, about changes in policy. So Danielle, it's a very complex kind of response. Because one of the things we talk about with system change, with our last caller, kind of sharing how important it is to look at that approach. That last slide with inverted triangle is it's there's really this kind of necessity to address the root cause of an issue. So what I often say is I don't like to recommend a key policy or statute change until we've done a real thorough like. Um, unpacking of what the issue is. Often what we've done is we've assumed that we know what the issue is and without looking at the root cause, we can actually create. Um, policy changes, we can shift resources and not actually address the issue so it doesn't sustain itself. So, um, yes, like all the things that were shared that your city looks at, like homelessness and looking at crime and looking at health, there's a lot of different complex issues. But I think without really going to the root cause, I don't want to say that this is the specific thing that comes out of it. Because it may not be that that's the need. And so one of the things that I want to, you know, say is this is about building capacity. Of leadership specifically and of staff to be able to have a structure and a system to address these complex issues. So sometimes that long-term work will show up as a policy change. But the short-term work sometimes shows up as what I also heard is these important dialogues that need to happen, right? This important work that needs to happen around shifting the way we even communicate and engage with our community. It's shifting the ways that we look at how do we become more inclusive to have people at the table to make decisions with us? To be able to collect qualitative data, the experiences of your community. That's a process, right? And so some of the outcomes are not always a policy. Some of the outcomes are a systems approach and a process to really unpacking. These complex issues that have been in existence for long, um, long before we, some, many of us were on this planet. And so I want to say that Danielle is kind of a longer answer, but the shorter answer, some of the things you shared, there are some specific policies. Um, depending on what those areas are that we're going to really unpack as priorities of the city council. Um, so that last piece of that is that, you know, there are a lot of equity issues. Um, and you can't solve them all at one time. So often what we say is let's focus on those that are the highest leveraging, the most impactful. And prioritize and let's really unpack the root cause of those because if we can address those issues. We can address many other issues that show up in data around gaps where some are served in ways that others are not. So I hope that answers a little bit Danielle because there's a lot of different nuances to that. And so I look forward to hopefully connecting with you as well to learn more about your perspective. And also many of you on the the call, who had some great comments. I appreciate each of them and respect them. Um, so I'll pause there, mayor, and allow you to continue.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Silva.
Yes, thank you. Um. So, um, so number one, you know, thank you for for bringing this up for us to consider, you know, and I do. I think one of the things that you mentioned, Nicole, was, you know, we're at different places throughout throughout this journey. Um, I'm kind of at the point where, you know, I I want to see that action. But the fact of the matter is I'm not the only one in this community. I'm not the only, well, maybe, you know, elected to represent those. Um, you know, in District Three, um, and in some ways, some could argue beyond, but, uh. I think that, you know, I'm not the only piece to this overall complex society that we've all inherited. Um, and I'm just, I'm just tired of the divisiveness. I'm tired of. The, these silos that a lot of folks work in, from agencies to departments to different cultures and subcultures. Um, you know, folks talk about quite a bit, myself included, about how we need to have those conversations and they're just not happening. They're just not happening. People are so comfortable defaulting to their own biases and calling other people out and. You know, without ever even engaging them. And it's just, and quite often these are adults and, uh, and really it needs to start with us as leaders. How we, how we look at ourselves and how we lead. Um, how those, so that's us right here on this council. Um, that includes our, those within our city leadership, those entrusted with our safety, those entrusted to enforce laws equally. Um, uh, you know, that that often has become a target of a lot of issues lately. Uh, you know, a lot of things that are kind of broke up, I'm saying brought up, excuse me, brought up. About, um, you know, requests from the public. Um, there are plans to, um, you know, to, uh, to, to. To see how those would apply as far as our police department goes, um, you know, with this highly anticipated upcoming study discussion. Um, but you know, as far as this work goes on how we engage with our community, I think it's really important. And since I came on, I've seen. I've seen how we've engaged, uh, being critical of it, um, you know, with our city manager and I appreciate folks responding to that. And I respect that. Um, I think how we acknowledge and how we take in community feedback is important. Whether we agree with what they're saying, whether we like what they're saying, no matter how sometimes disrespectful it might be. Uh, but that's, that's their truth. That's where they're, what they're, where they're at, what they're feeling. Um, and, uh, but again, I think the facilitated dialogue is something that's very necessary and something that. Um, that I am willing to, uh, even myself, um, once again, kind of go through that process. Uh, one thing I would like to suggest and consider is, um, with these focus groups, to have them within themselves to be a diverse group from different. Uh, different bodies. So while, uh, instead of maybe perhaps only city council. Um, you know, we have different, we have essentially a diverse group from different experience and different insight. Um, that again, are going through this process to eventually, um, collaborate and understand a process again, that's. Um, that that's going to come up with some type of tangible outcome. Uh, and I think that's key. Uh, one of my biggest frustrations with, um, the decades that I've been through these, um, you know, different talks and trainings. Is that, you know, a lot of times people go in there and then they kind of, they just kind of leave, uh, leave unchecked. And so that's one, one of the areas I've been. Uh, much more critical of the past couple of years. Um, you know, of how do we lead towards something that's tangible? And, um, so I will say, uh, you know, some of my colleagues have been able to access the Slano County School Board Association. Um, meetings that, uh, that Nicole has been putting on. Um, so it's a three-part series and I definitely. You know, I appreciate the efforts there, you know, and the the issues that they come up, it's not, you know, a lot of folks kind of get caught up in the, again, the hard word, racism. Um, but it's really about, you know, how are we best serving our students, students, faculty member, but how are we best really serving our residents? Right? How are we best serving each other? And I think that's, you know, as public servants, that is our duty. Um, that's what we're here to do and making sure that we are understanding and and not get caught up in the noise. Um, and focus on the good work that we're interested to do, I think is really key. And our responsibility to, uh, hold ourselves accountable towards, um, supporting the changes that are based on the voices of all those within our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Sullivan.
Uh, that's a hard comment to follow. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Silva. I I think, I mean, I echo many of Councilmember Silva's comments. I think. It. We're not getting anywhere on on any side. We're just screaming at each other and calling each other names. And at the end of the day, we have kind of made up our minds about all sorts of issues, no matter who you are in Vacaville. And I think. I really would challenge everyone to kind of reset that and pause that for a moment and, um, including my peers on council, including the public, including the staff. Um, to. I really like the elephant diagram. I mean, we're all touching a part of the elephant right now, but there's an elephant somewhere that we all need to see. And so, um, I think we have a real opportunity here and I can't speak for the rest of council. And I can understand why many in the public think we're checking the box or going through the motions. I'm 100% committed to this effort and I think if we can get other people to at least open their hearts, remove their their armor for one minute. And come to this with positive intent and solutions, um, and we can change. We, we can be a different Vacaville, uh, one that is the Vacaville that that everyone feels content to, or at least the bulk of us. And so I'm very excited about this project. Uh, Ms. Anderson, I think you have your work cut out for you. Um, I I don't know if you want to increase the contract now or, you know, but I think it'll be, it'll be a tough go, but we're, we're very excited. I think tonight's. Comments were, it's, it's a great, um, it was a great demonstration of kind of where we're at, like, we need some help and and. I'm really excited for this contract. I wanted to send out a special thank you to the community group that originally met with us probably eight or nine months ago. We met, I don't know, with the city manager probably six times to really talk about what was going on in Vacaville and how it's changed and how we need to grow and how we accept kind of the reality of the diversity that exists in Vacaville today and kind of how we move forward. And the group came to the realization that we needed some professional help. We needed some assistance. This wasn't just staff. This was a really amazing group of community members. And I also want to give the city manager a ton of credit. I think, you know, this is not something a city is mandated to do. We do, you know, water, police services, you know, we with parks and rec. I mean, this is not a required service, but he understood the value in this discussion and that Vacaville needed this. And so huge thank you for the city manager pushing this, this particular effort through and all the staff that supported that. And I would just ask everyone to give it a chance. I mean, and I'm speaking to my council members, to the mayor, to the staff. Let's do this. And, and I'm also speaking to the public, give us a chance. And I, I hope we approve this tonight. I know we've got a few more comments, but I'm, I'm, yeah. So, thank you.
Councilmember Wiley.
I, my internet blipped out for a minute, so I, if this has been covered, I apologize, but I don't think it had. I really think that this program is intended to make a difference. And it can make a difference if it helps people think about where they are and where other people are at the same time. It's not just coming in to talk to us and give us information, but there's a presentation and work within the city council, within the Vacaville staff, that with the committee that has worked before, with the police department, and three by threes with the school district, the school board, and see it with the schools and other areas around Vacaville. And most importantly, it includes three community forums so that the community can also be part of this as well. So I really like the fact that it's not like here, it's this week and it's working with, you know, these people for an hour and that's the end of the program. But to have it go on, you know, through the year and we'll constantly be thinking about how we can look at different parts of the elephant and see the whole thing. So the community forums is a great idea and working with the different parts of city leadership and other people. So I make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Go for a second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Mayor O.
Yes. Okay, next item, nine E. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of the city council, this item is carryover from the last meeting. It was consideration of the lease of city property located at 1040 Mason Street that we currently have an agreement with. We love our city. At that meeting, we had some questions about some items. We have been working with the tenant and Brian McLean is here to give the council an update and our recommended next steps on this item.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. As the city manager indicated, this item relates to the lease of the city's property located at 1040 Mason Street to We Love Our City and continues that lease extension discussion from the April 13th council meeting. Prior to that April 13th council meeting, city received public comments related to We Love Our City and their nonprofit status, regulatory issues and insurance coverage. At the April 13th council meeting, council moved to extend the lease by one month to May 20th to allow time for We Love Our City to submit a response to the, to the city and have it assessed by the city staff. On May 5th, the city received a response package from We Love Our City. Our staff is recommending to council tonight to extend the lease one month through June 20th to allow staff to assess the response and return to council at the June 8th council meeting with a recommendation for council's consideration. There is no fiscal impact to the general fund as a result of this action and the recommendation is by simple motion to adopt subject resolution. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll open public comment. Revante.
Um, yeah. What's up? Can you hear me? Okay. So yeah, I'm just going to say, I guess I'm going to be the first person to say, I don't, I do not think you should extend the lease. There are other groups and organizations out there that can do the same things that We Love Our City can do. But there's also the fact that this can also be used for something else to benefit the city. And that, that was it.
Great, thank you. Next caller. I see no other callers. I'm going to close public comment. I'll bring it back to the city council to entertain motion. Councilmember Silva.
Yeah, so just thinking a lot about city's proposal and just kind of my feelings of the particular parcel. I think we should just part ways. So what I'd like to motion is, is discontinuing the actual contract, but given the option to renegotiate at market rate and then proceeding with putting it through the surplus property process.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll entertain a second and then I'll, I still have more council members that want to speak.
Can I ask a clarifying question on the motion?
Sure.
So when you said market rate, so the mayor, we talked about this last meeting, I think, and the tenant was willing to do so. Do you mean they would pay market rate on like a month-to-month like agreement? Is that what you're, what you're implying?
All right, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, Councilmember Roberts.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Sorry, jumping over the most, but I did have a question for the staff, or I made a vote. What was the reasoning for the additional extension? I know you said to review the documents, but why couldn't that have been done during the previous extension?
So on May 5th, just a short time ago, we received the response package from We Love Our City representatives. So staff has not had time to fully vet the information and prepare appropriate response, staff report, come back to council with a recommendation based on that assessment of the information received.
Thank you.
I have a motion second. We can roll call vote.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question of the council, please?
Absolutely.
For clarification. So with the motion, as I understand it, discontinue the current lease agreement, not, not an issue. Question, with the fair market value of the month-to-month leasing, that is going to take the process to determine fair market value, working with the tenant, and is that something that the council wants us to bring back to them for consideration and finalization of fair market value? Or is that something that you want us to just move forward with and then begin the process for surplus property?
I'm going to go back to Councilmember Silva since it was his original motion. Can you clarify your motion, Mr. Silva? And are you saying that we kick, We Love Our City out?
I didn't say kick them out. I, so to answer city manager's question, I am comfortable with them determining the price, if that makes sense. Does that help?
Okay, so, so maybe what I would also like to do just for council's confirmation on, on the process. Okay, so as I understand it and based on what I'm hearing, the next steps that I would suggest would happen is that we would work with the tenant on identifying a fair market value lease rate. They would be allowed to continue to use the, the, well, I need to clarify, would they be allowed to utilize the building on a month-to-month basis as we complete the surplus property process? And also to confirm, the surplus property process infers that the council, by this direction, that the council is interested in selling the property, not leasing it. If we were to lease it, we don't need to go through the surplus property. If the council is directing us to put it out through the surplus property process, that means that we have the ability to go through that process to sell it should it clear the state's surplus property process. While that's happening, is it the intent that the tenant be allowed to continue to lease the facility on that agreed-upon fair market rate until such time as we complete that process? And then, once we get it through the state process, should it go through, then we would have to have additional time to go ahead and begin our own process. So we're talking about, you know, if you, if you include the maximum timeframe for the surplus property process at the state level, that could be upwards of five months. And then, once we get through that, it would probably take two, maybe three months, depending on how long or how robust of an RFP we put out for the, us to conclude our own process. So I just want to make sure the council is aware that we're talking about anywhere from five to eight months, maybe longer, to reach a conclusion on this subject.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Silva, will you restate your motion so it's very clear for everyone?
So, yes, sir. So first, so yes, everything, everything to what the city manager said.
Okay.
And so I guess then the question would be how, do you want me to recite what the city manager stated or?
Yeah, I think we got it, but I, I do have clarification from the city manager. So with the recommendation or the motion from Councilmember Silva, We Love Our City stays in the building. You guys come up with a fair market value and when you guys come up with a fair market value, they just start paying that fair market value at that time while we're still in the process of analyzing, selling the property or continuing to lease the property. Is that where we're going? City manager.
Yes, but I think there's a clarification question or comment from our city attorney.
Yes, I just have one clarification question. Would the remainder of the terms of the lease remain the same? Except for the rent and the actual term, the amount of time for the lease. That goes to month-to-month. And the fair market value rental rate changes, but the remainder of the terms would remain the same. Is that correct?
What's the remainder of the term?
So the obligation to perform graffiti abatement, provide certain community services, the insurance agreements, the indemnity provisions, things like that.
Councilmember Silva.
So I, so I guess the question is, wouldn't that be part of, so number one, I wouldn't expect them to do that if they're paying fair market rate. But if that's something that's a part of the negotiation process, I mean, I think that's a totally different question. But I think, so I guess maybe the best way to state that is just for, the, the exchange was for a dollar a year, right, for those particular services. Is that correct? So that would be honored to the end of this until, until if they, if they choose to continue doing that, continue to pay in a different rate for that site, then I would, that's what we discussed last time, that, that those would be things, particularly the graffiti abatement, that would be something that our public works would take on.
Well, so, so not to complicate this anymore, but the, the clarifications for purposes of that, the agreement is, is really being adjusted and modified through this proposed motion. And so the clarification that in exchange for the, for being allowed to lease the building on a month-to-month basis, we expect you to perform the services that you were previously performing under the previous contract.
So until they start paying full market value.
No, I, well, I can't speak for the council, but
I'm asking Councilmember Silva. I apologize. I just want this to be clear when we go to vote.
Yeah, I, I would not expect them to fulfill those commitments.
Okay.
Mayor, can I make a quick, a quick comment on my second, just because I did second this and then I want to just say one quick thing.
Yeah, but I've got a stack, I got a stack of people that are already in front of you, so I'm going to get to you, Vice Mayor, I promise. So let's, let's just go to Councilmember Wiley.
I, I just would like to say, the way this is shaping up to change quite a bit, you know, if, if we're changing quite a bit, it should be open to other groups that might want to use the building. So I don't think we should go very, very far from what we had certainly done before. Either extend it as was recommended or don't extend it. But I'm not in favor of changing a lot of other things because there are other groups that could want to use the program, use the building.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stockton.
Councilmember Wiley expressed my same concerns or comments.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Sullivan.
I think that's probably my same concern as well. So the public surplus process that the city manager stated is purely designed for sales. I, I don't necessarily want to sell the building, so that could be an option. What, what I am hoping, or what I thought the original motion was, was to allow them the grace to stay in the building, not disrupt their operations, allow them to pay far market, or fair market rate to stay there until we figure out the next best, highest use of the building, which could be for sale, but it also could be open for other bidders. And this doesn't just apply to them. There's several buildings in the city right now that we have local businesses and local groups wanting kind of resolution on. So I really am hoping that we look at our vacant property and kind of consider this for all the properties, including this property. I guess this is the highest priority because of the lease. So my intention when I seconded was exactly verbatim of what Councilmember Silva said. I don't think they should perform the services if they're doing fair market rent. But I also am not interested necessarily in selling the building. I want to put it back out for RFI, RFQ, whatever we need to do to see what other ideas are out there in the public. We Love Our City may be the only idea and maybe they reapply and maybe they get it. I, I'm not excluding them from reapplying. But I would like to open the building to other uses or other agencies if possible. So I don't want to kick them out in advance of that. I don't see any need to do that, but I do think I want to open it back up to the public like Councilmember Stockton and Wiley said.
Okay, so, thank you. So this is going to be a question and it's going to be a statement to, to Councilmember Silva. So the way I'm trying to understand it is we are going to let them stay there. We Love Our City will stay in that building. They will stay in that building until we come up with what a fair market value price is. The minute we come up with a fair market value price, we will offer that to them. If they take it, then they stay in that building as long as they're paying the fair market price. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. And, and if that's your motion, Nolan, do you still, excuse me, Vice Mayor Sullivan, do you still second that?
No, no, I, I would like to give them fair market rate while the city staff work on a process to assess the highest and best use of that property and other city properties. So I don't mind if it's a couple of months while the city works on that, but I'm not offering to rent it to them permanently. I, I think we need to open it back up to the public. So if that is the motion, I, I'm going to withdraw my second.
Okay, and Councilmember Wiley, you put your hand back up.
Right, that's what I just wanted to clarify, because the way you stated it, it sounded like they would just be in there paying fair market value and we didn't have an end date. So I just wanted to say we would work toward having a resolution with the building, not just their paying until we stop.
Okay, and, and so I'm going to go back to Councilmember Silva one more time. So they, they stay in the building. And then when we figure out a fair market price for them, if they want to them, if they want to pay that fair market price, they pay that forever, or do you have a stopping mechanism somewhere in that?
Well, my motion was for, to sell the property, but I'm not clear, so to go until, so that happens, to whatever, wherever the sale ends up. So, I guess, but, so the way I see it, there's, just based on comments, we haven't put it to a vote, there's three that are at least not in favor of selling.
Okay.
So I think that's where the, perhaps, one of the differences lie.
So do you want to pull your motion? Or do you want to just follow through and roll call vote it?
Sorry, is there a question?
So, if I could throw this out, based on what I'm hearing, I'm not certainly trying to, to recreate emotions, but based on what I'm hearing, we can do the negotiation with the current tenant on fair market value, assuming we get to that point, and while they are paying that amount to stay in the building, and if they are paying that amount to stay in the building, we will not request them to complete the services currently under contract. We can prepare a RFQ, RFP, that, and I would suggest that we just do it for this lone property and not include any other city properties, because those are various stages, and the council's focused specifically on this one, so I suggest we just do this one. And we can put it out there for interest, and identify it as available for lease or purchase, with the understanding that if there is, you know, a stronger interest for purchase, that we cannot negotiate with them until it goes through the surplus property process. So it's, it's a little, you know, extra steps in there, but it has to be, if you, if you want to allow the discretion for either/or to happen, because I'll be honest with you, we do not have people knocking on our door for that property right now, so I couldn't tell you what the highest and best use is at this point. So if the interest is to put it out there and see what kind of interest there is, we can do that, but again, at least we could, you know, bring that back and negotiate and share that with the council for consideration. If there's an interest of purchase, then we would have to update the council, get your approval to put it on the surplus property process and go through that, then come back with that interested property owner or buyer, and do that particular process. All the while, we love our city is still in there on a month-to-month basis, and because the current agreement gives us a 30-day notice period, we would have the ability to give that notice at such time as the council directs us to either consider leasing it to the current tenant or new tenant, depending on what kind of interest we get, or go through the purchase process. So I hope that clarifies.
Okay, so I have a motion from Silva. I will second it, and I have councilmember Wiley.
So one other thing I want to bring up is, we're discussing all this, but the issue is, what we requested a month ago was turned in late, and it hasn't been vetted by the city. So if the city does continue to vet that, which they should, and comes up with some red flags, then I don't want to be tied into a month-to-month lease at fair market value if there's red flags with that paperwork. So I think if the city sees that, then we should add that to, like, the next special agenda so that we can talk about it. So I just wanted to say that, you know, this is, we're having this discussion without really knowing, did they follow the rules that they were supposed to in filing the
Mr. City Manager?
Fair comments, and so, the other thing that we could do in response to that is, is that with the original recommendation tonight before you, for the 30-day extension, we can look into the data that was provided from the tenant. We can also begin to explore what fair market value is, and the tenant's interested in doing that, and come back to you at the June 8 meeting with an update on both of those items, and seek your direction at that time.
Councilmember Silva, do you want to just keep your motion, or do you want to amend it again?
You know what, I'm just going to pull it. Is that possible with the rules?
No, you're fine. Vice Mayor Sullivan?
I, I don't want to wait any longer, to be honest. I think, I, what Aaron said the first time seemed to match exactly what the spirit of councilmember Silva's comments were, it accommodated Stockton, and Wiley, and myself. I think Aaron said that, I, I would make a motion to support exactly what Aaron just said, I think that covers the whole panacea of things. This got way more complicated than I, than I thought it would get, but I don't necessarily want to wait, especially, you know, the information was turned in late, there is a possible aspect of liability of us running to someone with insurance that's, and I don't want to even talk about it, but there is some liability aspect there too. So I would like to motion that we proceed with the suggestion the city manager made, the first suggestion, and I could do my best to verbatim repeat that back to council, but I think that encompassed really the spirit of everyone's comments tonight, and I think that's the fairest compromise.
I, I think it would be fair to let the city manager talk about the insurance, because we did get an answer on that. Mr. City Manager, can you clarify that, because I do believe that's what everyone's talking about?
Yes, thank you. We did receive confirmation earlier today that the insurance is adequate and acceptable, so there is no risk of exposure to the city for that entity to continue operating there.
Awesome, that's great news. So I, I would like to, and I could attempt to have a city manager myself replicate what he just said, but I'd like to motion the option one he just gave us.
And, and just to clarify, it's going to be, let them stay in the building, and then we're going to come up with a fair market value price, offer them the fair market value price as we assess if we're going to lease or sell the building. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Okay, great.
On, on, so they, so they would get a month-to-month fair market price while we assess whether to sell or rent the building?
Yeah, that's your motion. Okay, and I will second that motion. With the motion and second, I will go to councilmember Stockton.
Thank you. I, my concern is that I haven't been able to read the response, and so I, I would really like to see what the response to the many questions that were raised by the public, as well as staff, before going into such an agreement. So I, I, those are my comments.
All right, let's roll call vote.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Rowlett?
Yes, and that's a 3-3 tie. So, I would say then, I'm going to make a motion just to do what the staff recommended, give them a 30-day extension, and then we can sort this out, although it's just going to be coming back to the city council again, but we're not getting anywhere tonight, so I'll make that an informed motion.
This is Stockton, I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call vote for that, please?
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Uh, yeah, yes, Vice Mayor Sullivan?
The city attorney, if we don't come to any consensus tonight, what happens? If we 3-3 this, and we 3-3 the next one, and 3-3 the next one, what happens?
Then the lease would expire on May 27, uh, May 20.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
No.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
No.
Councilmember Roberts? Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Rowlett?
Yes, so we have a 3-3. I do see Vice Mayor Sullivan's hand up.
Sorry, that was residual, I don't have a comment.
Okay, I do see councilmember Roberts, hopefully he has a motion for it.
I hope so, here in a minute. Just for a question for the city manager and city attorney, does it have to come back to council? So if we motion to, for example, give them through June 20th for you guys to sort out any of the paperwork and details, and then from there, if everything checks out, continue to the city manager's recommendation, which Vice Mayor Sullivan motioned?
We, we need an action from the council, because the agreement is due to expire, and if the council does not take an action that either extends that on a month-to-month basis, or for the five years or another term, then the agreement becomes null and void.
Well, the agreement is actually currently expired, correct, City Manager?
Yes, so what is it asking, like, we did do the extension through June 20th, and everything checked out fine with the paperwork you guys need to review, or the documents you need to review, and we give you authority to, if then it checks out, to grant a month-to-month lease per your recommendation?
Well, that, I would need that action tonight from you, because, you know, to the Vice Mayor's point, the council continued it from your last meeting to resolve those issues that council asked us to bring back to you to make the decision on whether or not, based on the satisfactory, you know, the, the level of response, whether or not that was satisfactory to the council or not, to decide whether or not you did want to extend it or not.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to let councilmember Roberts, yes, you can make that motion, and you can go ahead and make that motion if you'd like.
Okay, yes, I'd like the motion is, give them the extension through June 20th, allow the city staff to verify the documents that were submitted, and if everything turns out to be the way it should be, then grant them a month-to-month extent, a month-to-month fair market lease, until the city staff can come up with either the lease or for the surplus sale of the property. Yeah, so that's my motion.
I will second that motion. Can we have a roll call? Oh, no, I see councilmember Silva's hand, no. I have a roll call vote, please.
I have a clarifying question.
Oh, thank you, go ahead, sir.
Is, is that the first one that, sorry, would that be the second, related to the second motion that I believe Nolan made?
Yes, give them the extension and then follow on with the motion that Vice Mayor
So then, sorry, so, so basically the existing contract expires in 30 days, and then there's a fair market assessment, month-to-month, and then we evaluate whether or not we want to open it up for leasing to other companies or sell? Or other agencies? So back to the second one, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, okay, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to complicate, because what I heard was, with the Vice Mayor's mo, you know, picking up the Vice Mayor's motion from prior, with the extension to June 20th, allowing staff the opportunity to evaluate the documents that we received at the late hour, determining that it adequately addresses our concerns about the tenant being in there. Then if we do that, then we go out for, that we figure out a, a month-to-month fair market lease rate, tenant continues to pay that on a month-to-month basis, while we are going out for interest from anybody and everybody to either lease or purchase the property. And then, okay.
Okay, Roberts, are you, are you good with that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we have a, let me see, no, I have councilmember Stockton. Go ahead, councilman Stockton.
So that means that we would be selling the property, we wouldn't be using this to allow, to potentially allow another nonprofit or organization to leak to rent for a dollar a year, correct?
No, that's not correct. The way I understood, the, the prior desire was, is to open it up for lease and/or sale, and see what kind of interest we get. And then based on the, the level of interest and the types of projects, we would have to bring that back to council for your consideration, based on the interest that you receive.
Okay. Okay, can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, can, because I messed with the councilmember Roberts' motion, and you seconded, could I trouble you to re-second to your second?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Rowlett?
Ta-da, yes. Thank you very much, council, for being patient through that one. We will move to item F, and I'm going to have our fire chief, Chris Concepcion, if you're still on the line, please, please give us an update on the COVID-19, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, I'm going to keep this really short, because not much has changed over the last two weeks since I gave you your last update, and I'm going to proceed as Crystal gets the PowerPoint there. As far as California is concerned, we're at still over 3.6 million cases, just 23,782 increased over the last two weeks since our last update, 61,246 deaths. The good news is positivity rate in the state continues to drop, and it's at 1% right now. In Solano County, 32,880 cases, in addition to 567 cases, we have 249 active cases, a little bad news there, we added, we have 35 more cases now than we did two weeks ago. There are currently 16 hospitalized, 216 deaths, and our seven-day positivity rate, according to the state, is at 2%, so we're at about twice the positivity rate as, as the rest of the state. In Vacaville, 8,587 cases. As far as the state of California, next slide, please, Crystal. As I stated last, last time, vaccine is now available to everyone 16 and older, and as of last count and last update from the state, thirty, almost 33 million Californians have been vaccinated. And then the governor yesterday announced a California Comeback Plan, which is a $100 billion stimulus plan for the state of California, and he had stated that about two-thirds of Americans, anyone earning $75,000 or less will be getting a $600 stimulus check, and then there's also going to be some rental assistance included in that, in that plan. As far as Solano, we remain in the red tier, and probably are not anywhere close to getting into the, the orange tier. However, on the good news, 210,000 people have at least one dose, and 147,000 Solano County residents are, 42% of the population is fully vaccinated. As far as Vacaville is concerned, on May 19th, a week from tomorrow, there are going to be two second-dose vaccines, so that will add about 1,500 residents of Solano County that are going to be fully vaccinated after that. And that completes my presentation, unless anyone...
Thank you for your report. I'm going to open it up to public comment. I see no public comment, I'm going to close public comment. I see no councilmembers' hands, we appreciate your presentation, we'll move to the city manager's board, number 10.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to bring up something that was mentioned or referenced earlier tonight, just very briefly, so everybody knows that we are listening and we are working on actions. There was reference to the CART program. Um, there was reference to the CART program, and that is essentially what we consider, um, a mobile crisis unit. And just last week, uh, Solano County, um, announced with COVID, with their program that they've been working with, um, all the cities, um, on, for a, a regional, uh, mobile crisis unit team, um, that will do just the same things, I believe, as well as being expressed with the CART program. And so, uh, the county received a three-year grant, and the cities are, will be working with the county on implementing that program. The pilot program kicked off just last week, um, in the city of Fairfield in Saultana City. It's my understanding that that program will be coming to Vacaville and Dixon, um, in August. And so we are very anxious and, and very excited about what this program will bring to the community, um, and to the region, and the efforts that it will do to, uh, address those, uh, calls for service for mental health needs, um, and for other, uh, calls of service where police officers do not, uh, are not necessarily needed for, for response. So, um, we will provide the council and the community with more information as it gets closer to, um, the next phase where, uh, it comes to Vacaville, and so I just wanted to share that with the council and the community that, um, we are, um, very excited about this activity coming to Vacaville. So thank you, that concludes my, uh, report.
Thank you very much. Reports of city council? Vice Mayor Sullivan?
I have a really, a really quick one, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I made this comment earlier, I think during the CDBG presentation, and I'm wondering if, uh, any of my other councilmembers would support me in this agenda item. I would like to ask staff to essentially research, uh, a emergency fund that can be used, uh, particularly for low-income housing emergencies or kind of senior low-income housing emergencies. So there was an issue this week, I talked about it briefly, woman's bathroom was down in city-sponsored housing through a private landlord for almost twenty days, they were forced to use another bathroom with COVID, they got the runaround, we tried to put them in a motel today, couldn't identify funds, um, and again, this issue's happened a couple times, this happened with the fire, we didn't have space for funds for folks, this has happened with apartment fires where people are displaced. Um, I'd really like to identify, uh, adequate amount of funding annually that can either be housed in Emily's shop or maybe the first team or what city manager's office, wherever it makes sense, and a policy or criteria that can be used to expend that in emergency situations where there's no other resources. Uh, not an urgent item, I don't care if it comes back in three months or four months or next month or whatever, but in, in the next couple of months, um, I would like to make a motion to have staff identify, uh, an emergency housing fund, uh, and bring some options back to council at a future council meeting that's, um, doable for them.
I a hundred percent agree with you, Vice Mayor, I'll make that, uh, a second.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Rowlett?
Yes. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, first and foremost, I wanted to, um, issue, uh, uh, thanks to, um, Chief Carley, uh, retired after thirty-two years of dedicated service to the Vacaville community. Um, I had the, uh, pleasure to attend his walkout and wanted to wish him and his family the best. I would also like to thank, um, the, um, interim chief, um, Ian, uh, Schmutzler, for, um, kind of being tossed into a role, um, that I think he did a really great job with for the time that he was there, and I wanted to welcome Chief Alio, and, um, I'm really excited that he's gonna be here to supervise this audit and help us get through these difficult times that we're facing here in Vacaville. So I wanted to, um, make sure that I, that I noticed them. And lastly, I wanted to commend Councilmember Silva for the event that he planned to recognize, uh, mothers in the community on Mother's Day. Um, I really appreciate the lengths that you go to, Councilmember Silva, to address the people and people in our community that are doing great things, so thank you for that.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Silva?
Uh, thank you, so, um, uh, thank you, Councilmember, uh, Stockton. Um, so, I mean, I, I, I got a couple of things, but, you know, I know it's getting late, but, uh, you know, um, uh, you know, I'm excited, uh, about the, uh, the opportunities that, that do exist, um, as we continue, um, to, to, to truly be innovative with our police department. Um, and so I, I, you know, I, I really wanna see that, uh, be something that, that, uh, we continue to develop and, and best serve, uh, everyone, um, you know, and I know it's gonna be a, a process, so, um, uh, so just kind of echoing what, um, uh, Councilmember Stockton was mentioning, um, I, but it kind of going down my, my list here, um, I met with the Professor Emily Schlickman, uh, from UC Davis, um, and I hope I pronounced her last name correctly, but, uh, she had an awesome, you know, group of students that came out from urban design, uh, originally connected, uh, through, um, Fred Bredary, um, and, uh, they just, they put together some, uh, really cool concepts, uh, for the, the folks that live off of the Gene Way, um, that area, you know, I'm pretty familiar with, you know, kind of, you know, growing up, uh, in the area and visiting, you know, families and friends, um, out there, and, you know, and hearing, you know, that, oh, there, you know, there's been, you know, different issues over the years to where they cut off access to the creeks and the, that open lot behind, behind them. Um, so just kind of, you know, having to come in and, and, um, actually engage the folks, uh, on the streets was something really important, um, and, uh, you know, it was, it was eye-opening, because a lot of times we feel that we don't, you know, A, we send out these surveys, or, you know, we put these Facebook posts or whatever, uh, most folks don't quite respond to that, you know, and I know a lot, some people are happy to, you know, uh, go back and forth on, you know, social media posts about whatever, but, um, you know, as far as getting like quality impact or kind of understanding where people come from, it's really important to go, uh, to them, and, uh, and, and, um, and so I really wanna thank those that, that came out, uh, to provide feedback, um, you know, and it's, and it's just, it's always very amazing and, and inspiring, um, to, to just kind of hear, you know, you know, how humble folks are and how appreciative are and, uh, that people actually think about them, and, and like, yeah, it would be nice to have something for our kids, you know, have to play out, you know, in the street, and, you know, it'd be ha- nice to have somewhere we can, you know, have a barbecue or music and, oh, we, we, you know, it'd be nice to be able to connect, um, our creeks to, you know, have jog walkways or whatever might be, uh, to downtown. Um, so, you know, all, all those kind of concept, concepts that came out, you know, it was, it was pretty cool, and I really love seeing that, that collaboration and bringing in, um, new, move, excuse me, new perspective, fresh eyes to, um, to these things that can really improve our, our community, and, um, you know, while those are just concepts, I'm, I'm really hoping, um, and committed to seeing how we can make that come to fruition, uh, particularly for that, for that area. Um, the Mother's Day event, uh, the, 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 you know, my mom has Alzheimer's, um, and I hadn't been able to actually physically see her for a year, um, you know, because I, I needed help, um, you know, and, and it's, uh, it's pretty hard, uh, being in what they call the sandwich generation, uh, where you're raising kids and, uh, having to take care of your, your, um, your elder, uh, that's disabled, uh, you know, by no fault of their own, uh, and it's, it's been a challenge, and so, um, I really wanna give a shout-out to all the mothers, um, you know, particularly those single mothers out there struggling. Um, that event was, uh, was really, um, you know, was just something I wanted to do simple, uh, just, um, you know, this concept, hey, let's just have some food and music in, in an area that typically doesn't quite have that, um, and to make it accessible to folks that, um, that they themselves often feel, uh, quite disenfranchised, and, um, you know, a- again, it was just inspiring to see, uh, folks come out and still kind of reserved and shocked that, hey, somebody, somebody cares about us, um, and, uh, you know, so that, that was really there to, uh, recognize and honor our mothers, um, you know, and a lot of times, uh, folks, um, you know, uh, we have complicated relationships with our, with our parents, um, but, you know, uh, from my, you know, from my experience, um, the women in my life have been truly impactful and, um, you know, and I wouldn't be where I'm at if it wasn't, uh, for, uh, further contributions, so, um, this was something that, you know, was, was also, uh, tended to focus on the Spanish-speaking population a- as well, um, that kind of really, uh, focused on that, that area, and that was just honestly based on the feedback from the community, um, and, uh, and, you know, and, and seeing all the, you know, different agencies, different volunteers that came out, all the sponsors, um, you know, it, it quickly grew to something that was just, hey, I just wanna have tacos and music, um, to, uh, to, you know, where, um, a lot of folks stepped up, and amazingly enough, um, the most, you know, if you had to break it down, many women stepped up, um, so, uh, and, uh, so that's interesting in itself, um, you know, 'cause I, uh, in the, in telling, and, and, you know, as a result of that, you know, it, um, it brought the community together and it helped develop, uh, you know, a sense of pride, um, it, it allows us to start developing, uh, some type of accountability and, um, and, and finding ways to also support our local businesses and, and a pathway, uh, to make that American dream a reality. So, um, you know, I, I can't thank, um, the, those that, um, that, that were all part of that effort, uh, to make that possible, is, you know, truly humbled, um, and, uh, you know, and, uh, just to let everyone know, like, one common theme that I had heard from folks going around there was, um, that this is really good for the soul, you know, this is, the, these type of events is really good for the soul, like, we don't see a lot of things like this, and, um, you know, this is, you know, it's, uh, it's just something that just came up with a, a few different conversations, that it was good for the soul. And, um, you know, and, you know, and I think that's what really makes Vacaville, um, what it can be, you know, uh, it's how we all come together to celebrate life, um, you know, and what we bring, um, and, and I think, uh, you know, a lot of great things come of that, and one of those is, you know, I've had several conversations with folks that have already reached out, um, trying to plan for the next one, uh, later this year, or the, um, you know, another event later this year, or actually next year, and how, man, it would be sure nice if we can get some electrical or a stage and this and that, um, so, uh, you know, 'cause we run off of generators and, and whatnot, and that was, that was fun to keep going. Um, so, uh, but, you know, um, but, you know, again, uh, you know, thanks to all those who, who came out, and, uh, and I really appreciate the, the support, it truly is humbling, and, um, you know, uh, quite honestly, you know, to put in lack of better terms, um, I really truly love you all, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wiley?
All right, just a couple of quick things to mention as well. Um, we had our vote on Lagoon Valley, and I did early, earlier, I did have a meeting with, uh, the developer, and I asked questions about the Seattle project because that came up at the last city council, I mean, our last city council meeting, so the people from the public had called in and had concerns, so I just wanted to find out more about that, and so I did want to just let the public know I followed up on, on following up on those comments, and I just appreciate the people who are concerned and, and really look into the issues that affect our city, so thanks for those. And then I did attend the event at Chara Park yesterday, or Mon- Sunday, and it was a very good event, thanks Mike, Silva, and also the, the, a lot of community service, the police were out there, the, you know, Police Activities League, the Boys and Girls Club, and community with First Five Solano, so it was really good to see a lot of people come together to be there for the families. I attended the farmer's market on Saturday, and there were a lot of vendors and produce and donuts, so that's a great program, so hope that'll be great, it'll go through October, I believe. Um, I wanted to see more about the city, I'm continuing my learning tour, and I toured the wastewater facility and had a great, um, great, um, introduction about how the whole thing worked. And I also, uh, have a ride-along this week, so I'll find out more about what happens with the police in, attended briefing, so I'm looking forward to that. And I also, um, met with some community leaders across the county, from supervisors and mayors and superintendent of, at, at public education for the county, just to see how we can maximize our resources to help the people in need. And, um, tomorrow I have a meeting with the Air Quality Management Board, I, so I don't have a report, but that's another committee that I serve on, and we meet tomorrow. So thank you all for, uh, your service and for the public for being involved, and the staff for keeping us all on track.
Thank you very much. Um, I see no other councilmembers, so I'll wrap it up. I just wanted to, um, congratulate, uh, Greg Ritchie on his, uh, victory, um, in the, um, District Two election. Uh, we look forward to having a complete council, um, it's gonna be exciting to have a, another one up here with us, and, uh, I just look forward to doing great things for the city of Vacaville, so congratulations, Greg, look forward to you swearing in soon. And, uh, with that, I will move to item twelve of closed session, and we have nothing, so goodnight, Vacaville.